We're trying to, it's a weird position. We're trying to change things. So it's kind of weird. Especially, especially this night.
I really like Chief water.
He is a whole sort of data guru. It's very rudimentary. Well, it's detailed, but it's not like organized while it still works. It's got all kinds of good information. And that would keep us, you know, from far, fifteen, twenty guys. It's hard to say.
Okay, and where's the public hearing? Meeting call to order, please. Please join me in the prayer. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May be we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings and all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Getchier.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Newman. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Eleven present.
Any moment of silence? Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today is National Vietnam Veterans Day honoring the more than two million people, veterans, who served in the Vietnam War and the more than fifty-eight thousand who gave their lives. I am bringing this up this evening to honor the service and sacrifice of our brothers and sisters if we could stand and dim the lights after and have a moment of silence for all our veterans who gave them themselves and paid the ultimate sacrifice and came home and were not treated to the best. But this city and this city council honors you and thanks you for your service. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Scott. Moment of silence? Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chambers in honor of Robert F. Bob DeMers, who passed away last Tuesday. As the son of late Andrew M. and Virginia Morris DeMers, Bob grew up in back central and graduated from Lowell High in 1971. He then went on and graduated from U Lowell in 1976. Later, he went on to earn his master's degree from Riviera College. Bob worked in many aspects of technology and database services, including time at Wang Labs as a programmer, data collection for the Lawrence Public Schools, and as a database administrator for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, among others. He also worked as an adjunct professor for UMass Lowell from 2001 until 2017. In his retirement, he kept busy obtaining a real estate license, serving on the Tewksbury Board of Registers and the Tewksbury Housing Authority. Bob was a very generous man, and whenever he could, he would help with many local, regional, and national charities. Bob and his husband Juan Alvarez would have celebrated their 25th wedding anniversary in the coming days. Bob is also survived by his brother Andrew DeMers and his wife Marlene of Hudson, Florida; Andrea DeAngelis and her husband Michael DeAngelis of Lowell; Frederick DeMers and his wife Donna DeMers of Tinsborough; Virginia Shea and her husband Richard of Drakett; Mary Ann Doster and her husband James of Tinsborough; and James DeMers and his wife Tammy of Lowell. He also leaves a sister-in-law Jane Murphy DeMers of Drakitt and Fiona McDonald of Tewksbury. He leaves behind several nieces and nephews and countless friends across greater Lowell and beyond. Bob was predeceased by his brother G. Philip DeMers and sister Ruth Ann DeMers. He will be sorely missed. Thank you.
And other memorials today? Mr. Clerk, please dim the light. Before I start the agenda, I could ask Lieutenant David King, Adam Dowling, Julio Pastrana, and Lieutenant Ryan Covelo, Michael Gennaro, Anthony Cronk, please come to the council's desk in the front, please. To Mayor's business, 2.1 Communication Remote Zoom Participation Motion to Accept and Place on Fire by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Scott, on favor of the I post a note, I have it, motion is carry. 2.2 Communication Laura Complaint Motion to Refer to Law Department for Report and Recommendation by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Yem, on favor of the I post a note, I have it, motion is carry. Going to 2.3, I have a few citations for the night, and I want to thank, it's my honor to present a citation to the Lowell Fire Department, and tonight we are honoring Engine Two and Ladder Two. I thank you all for being here. The citation is given to Engine Two and Ladder Two. On behalf of the entire Lowell Fire Department, the way I look at the Lowell Fire Department, it is one team, it is one unit, even though there are many houses around the city, and that's what makes you, the men and women, great, just having that sense and that philosophy of operating as one unit, always helping each other. And I want to thank Counselor Rourke for helping me arrange tonight's event. I know many counselors want to make comment also. I will present the citation, and then the counselor can also add on to the comments afterward. Official citation. Be it hereby known to all that the City of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations and appreciation to Lowell Fire Department. Let it be known to all that the City of Lowell offers its sincerest gratitude to the Lowell Fire Department for the actions taken in the afternoon of March 3rd, 2022. Faced by heavy smoke and fire conditions upon arrival, firefighters demonstrated professionalism and bravery and rescuing residents from the third-floor porch of 27-29 Mard Street. During this fire, the Lowell Fire Department used ground and aerial ladders to rescue six people, including several children. The entire City of Lowell extends its deepest appreciation to the members of the Lowell Fire Department for their heroism and dedication to duty while protecting our citizens. Therefore, I, Mayor Sakari Chow, hereby extend the gratitude of the entire city council and the citizens of the city to the Lowell Fire Department. The City of Lowell is proud to celebrate the exemplary deeds of service to the community. Signed by myself and entire council body tonight, want to congratulate the entire Lowell Fire Department and Ladder Two and Engine Two. Any counselors would like to make comment? Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer my congratulations to these fine firefighters who did exemplary service for our city by going into a building when a building is full of smoke and on fire and people run in called firefighters while everybody, probably including myself, is running out. I call these people heroes. You might call yourself firefighters, but I call you heroes. And I know that you're standing here today, having been cited and honored, but I know there are everyone on the fire department. You're probably not standing there, but you're just as much a hero. Public safety is number one, very, very important in this city, so it's nice to know that we have people that are willing to put on a uniform and put on a helmet and put on a raincoat and go in and save people and try to put fires out. I can't begin to thank you enough for everything you do to make our city so proud. Thank you for adding that public safety factor that everybody in the city looks so highly for. Thank you for being that courageous person with the title firefighter, but don't ever forget, in my eyes, you are heroes. Thank you very much.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the entire city council and my family particularly, want to thank you for your dedication, and like Counselor Mercier said, you are all heroes, and I just want to commend you on the hard work during the pandemic, and also your dedication, working with what you have. May not be perfect, the firehouse, the engine, but you make it work so that you protect our cities, the people, the resident of Lowell. I just want to thank you so much. And the Veterans Office will sponsor a hometown heroes banners that will honor the veterans and first responders, including the firefighters. So I personally, my family, and I would like to sponsor some banners, so if you can come up with names of the heroes of the Lowell Fire Department, provide us with the pictures, we will make it a banner to honor them, and the banner will be displayed through the whole month of May 2022. I just want to thank you and thank you for your work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you very much. My colleagues have said it so well, but thank you all for your courage and for your bravery. Also, thank you for the sacrifices, all of you, that your families make every day. We're just very proud of all of you, and we want to be a resource for all of you, so please reach out to us with any ideas or anything that we can do for you. Thank you.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, every once in a while, we in this chamber get to recognize the members of this department for specific actions that exemplify the courage and the bravery of each and every member of the department, but also want to recognize that it's not just in these incidences where these actions are exemplified, but each and every day, whether it's you standing here in the chamber, or those up in the gallery, or those working a shift right now, you show up for work not knowing what to expect, not knowing what you're going to have to respond to, and that sort of courage and bravery goes with you to the job each and every day, whether there's an incident like we're honoring and recognizing tonight. So I just want to thank each and every one of you here and each and every member of the department for what you bring to the job every single day. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I wish I could say I'm surprised, but I'm really not. Every day you go to medical calls, to accidents, to fires, and even outside of your jobs, you all donate to our community by doing boot drives and everything else, and this community is very lucky to have all of you, and from the bottom of all of our hearts, we say thank you and continue doing what you're doing.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As all my colleagues have mentioned, thank you all for all the work you do every day, for this incident and for everything else that goes noticed or unnoticed in this city. Your commitment to this city and its safety are unparalleled and are appreciated by every member of this community, not just the ones who are lucky enough to be in this room with you today, but every member of our community, and so I thank you. And as Counselor Getchier said, please just continue what you're doing, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to improve the fire department and keep it as best as it can be. So thank you so much.
Counsel Robertson.
I'd just like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Again, thank you. I know many of you personally, you know, have been very supportive right along. The work you do is second to none. It takes a certain type of person to dedicate their life into saving others, and it's admirable, it's honest, and I'm very appreciative and thankful that great men and women like yourselves have taken that upon yourself and stepped up to the plate. And again, as a council, my colleagues have already echoed, anything we can do to help you along the way in this occupation and in the community, please let us know. Thank you very much.
Counselor Leahy.
Just echo the words that everyone else has said, thank you for stepping up to the plate, and thank you, thank you, thank you to you and your families. Thank you.
Counsel Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo all my colleagues, and I'm sure people at home too appreciate it, the work that all of you and the sacrifice that your family make, you know, just so you can go out there and save lives. It's sad, though, sometime I sat there and spoke of the deplorable condition of the firehouse that you not only worked there, you lived there, and yet you hardly complained. We work, we, this council, will promise to work to improve the firehouse, to give you enough tools, your fire truck and all that, to do your job, and to appreciate it very much. Thank you. Thank you to your family for all you do for the City of Lowell.
Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, the comments of my colleagues have may have been tremendous. Yeah, I would just say once again, you know, thank you for proving my point when I tell people that the Lowell Fire Department is the best department in the state, and that was proven again on that day. Similar to Counsel Robinson and Counsel Mercier, you have close friends on the fire department, and you know, your first thought when there's a fire such as Mard Street, you think of those that are close to you, but also your family members, you know, what they must be going through when things like this happen, but to continuously put yourselves in harm's way, there's lots of many occupations that when you leave and kiss your family goodbye, that you're not sure if you're going to come home or not. Join my colleagues and just being very thankful for your service to the city. Thank you.
I also understand, if I could ask Chief Sharon to say something a little bit as well, chief?
They'll be looking for me to be even briefer. I just want to say thank you to the council, to you, Madam Manager, and to all represented here for recognizing the personnel of the Lowell Fire Department. They do a tremendous job every day. Sometimes you feel like the hard work that you do isn't always recognized, but this goes a long way in showing us that the people of the City of Lowell and its government care for the work that we do, and I'd like to take an opportunity to thank everybody in the fire department for the work that they do and for their representation here tonight. Thank you.
Before I present the citation, I would also like to ask Lieutenant King to say a few words as well.
Madam Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we'd like to thank you for this honor, but it'd be neglectful if we didn't take a moment to reflect on the loss suffered that day, Petra and her family. For your loss, I'm truly sorry. With tragedy comes unity, and our great city is known to share tragedies. The heroism witnessed that day was not only performed by the Lowell Fire Department, but from neighbors and a babysitter blaming flames and an attempt to save lives. Arriving on scene first, things were a bit chaotic, but the brothers and sisters got right to work, and five lives were saved that day in under three minutes. Please just take a moment and reflect on how fast three minutes of your life goes by. These acts were and are not accomplished by any one firefighter or firehouse. Look around. You have the best and bravest protecting our city. I imagine you all have one or two people you can count on when things get tough. Imagine how fortunate we all feel because there are over 200 men and women in the Lowell Fire Department that we can count on when the unimaginable becomes reality. That's why we can do our job. It's knowing that we have family like them coming from us with no concern for their own safety. There are another 200 professionals I'd be remiss not to mention, as they have family to us as well, and that's the Lowell Police Department. In our profession, even when we do everything right, things can go wrong, but rely on one another to get through those moments, whether crawling down smoke-filled hallways, performing CPR, or working through the uncertainty of a global pandemic. It's all done for you, the citizens of Lowell. To the citizens of Lowell, there is another group of professionals you can count on as well. They occupy the seats in front of me. They are the city council and the management team of Lowell. As a firefighter and a lifelong citizen of Lowell, thank you for what you do for us. In closing, would again like to thank you for this honor. It belongs to the men and women of the Lowell Fire Department. We six just happen to be standing before you tonight. Please remember, what you have referred to as bravery tonight, we all consider just doing our jobs. Thank you.
I would like now to present a citation, but I also want to thank, as the counselor mentioned also before, all the families who are here in the gallery today, and all the families and firefighters at home watching this as well. If you don't mind, I'd like to come on in and we'll take a picture with the citation all together.
Welcome. Thank you. That was nice.
It's also a pleasure to present the following citation. This is personal. It's, I want to thank Counselor Corey Robinson for bringing this to my attention and working with me to, on this citation, inviting this family. I just want to let people know, on my first half, I bought my cabinets and my sink from your family's small business, so I think it's only fitting on the last couple of days before the closing of your business that I can able to present you the citation. So if you could have you come stand up at the podium, that'd be great. Mr. Gagnon? Yes. Citation, be it hereby known to all that the City of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to AG Hardware. AG Hardware was started by Andre Gagnon and his wife Julie in 1954 in the West Centreville section in the City of Lowell. After securing space and completing a major cleaning, previous business was a donut shop. AG Hardware was officially opened April 22, 1954. Over the years, it has grown to more than 10 times the original space. AG carried over 19,000 items in stock and had access to more than 100,000 additional items. Current second-generation owner is Louise Gagnon, the youngest of the Andre and Julie's
We're putting park benches together, forgot the wrong-sized nutter bolt, you were always there. I purchased my home later on in Centerville, completely remodeled it. Again, there was days I was going there completely filthy, eight to nine times because I forgot that desperately needed nutter bolt, so, and I'm sure my story is echoed throughout the district. You are a go-to neighborhood hardware store, which is becoming unfortunately a thing of the past, and you, your family, your business will be desperately missed. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Another comment? Mr. Gagnon, would you like to say something, please?
A little nervous. I, I just, I'm amazed in the last month, when we announced our closing sale, how many nice comments we've had from people.
Could I ask you to speak closer to the microphone? I know there's a lot of people there, want to hear what you say.
I said in the last month during our closing sale, it's been amazing how many people have come up to myself, my family, and told us how much the store meant to them, and it just kind of, it kind of blows me away actually, because I didn't realize a hardware store was that much to people, but I've heard so many nice comments, I can't believe I'm here in front of you people, and I thank you very, very much for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to present a citation to you right now.
chamber, as Counselor Mercer had mentioned at the last term. And I had the pleasure of tasting the bubble tea, which is across the street, the grand opening this past Saturday, and it's kind of dangerous now, so, because every meeting now, I'm going to go order bubble tea to bring into the council chamber during my meeting. Thanks to Counselor Paul Dr. Yam for bringing them to Lowell and introducing them and having opened a business here in the city. And I had asked Counselor Yam to read the citation on the council's behalf.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Citation, be it hereby known to all that the city of Lowell in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Golden Tea Cafe and its owner, Suchita May and her husband, Red May. On their grand opening at 366 Merrimack Street, Golden Tea Cafe offers a variety of soft drinks and desserts at an affordable and competitive prices. Now I hereby, Mayor Sukari Chow, hereby offer all the best to Suchita May and Red May. The entire city of Lowell welcome Golden Tea Cafe and look forward to their services for the community, given this 26th day of March, 2022. Signed by Mayor Sukari Chow and the entire city council. So Suchita May have to manage the store, so she cannot be here, so her husband will be, is here to accept the citation.
I, it is my pleasure and honor to be here. My wife, like you says, she's not able to come here today because she's taking care of the store right now, nobody is in the store. So the, our store is located across the street at 366 Merrimack Street. Just like you say, we serve mostly soft drink, different kind of drinks such as shake, iced coffee, iced tea, fruit tea, as well as boba tea. We also serve a small bakery dessert, as well as ice cream. We open seven days a week from 1:30 to 8 o'clock, so please feel free to stop by and have a taste. Thank you.
Can I ask the councilor to have a picture with them? Congratulations again.
I'm just finished off. The city clerk.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
I need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Scott, on favor of the I oppose, say no, the I have it, the motion is carry. Now go to three, city clerk, 3.1, Minutes of Housing Subcommittee, March 22, city council meeting, March 22, for acceptance, motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Gishia, second by Counselor Noon, on favor of the I oppose, say no, the I have it, motion is carry. We now go to four, general public hearings, 4.1, amending loan order, $38,568,011 for high school project, all in, opened, all in favor portion. Do you want the public speaker to go first?
I live on Park V UAV in Lowell, and I'm speaking tonight as both a resident and as the executive director of Lowell Plan, in favor of amending the loan order in support of the construction and renovation of the Lowell High School. The quality of our public schools is vital to any community's future economic growth. The long-term benefits of the new Lowell High School are arguably more important than any other economic stimulus project we've seen in the city. Investments in schools have broad benefits, not just for residents or children. The quality of its educational system is often a key factor in attracting businesses to the area. Anyone considering opening a business in Lowell will certainly be concerned about the quality of our public education system, not just because it means a well-trained and skilled workforce, but also as a reflection of the quality of life that employers and employees want to experience. Investments in Lowell High School will also ensure that the city remains competitive with our neighboring communities. If we're going to be serious about fostering a strong environment for economic development and bringing more quality jobs to the city, we need to invest in our educational infrastructure. A new state-of-the-art high school will ensure Lowell students are prepared for the challenges and rigors of a changing global economy, improve the quality of life for residents, and attract new investment from the private sector. Authorizing the amendment to the loan order is arguably one of the most significant votes you'll make, and without a doubt, the price tag is high, but the cost of doing nothing will be much higher. The high school project is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to transform the academic landscape of every student in the public school system. We firmly believe that investment of this kind will make Lowell High the best high school, public high school, in the Commonwealth, and a point of pride for all Lowellians. It's critical that you vote tonight to authorize the borrowing of these additional funds so that the project is not delayed, resulting in further cost overruns. Approving the amendment tonight will help ensure that the project is completed on time and to the high standards that our students and teachers deserve. We applaud the courage of the city council to take this important vote in favor of Lowell's future. Thank you.
Still open to all in favor? On favor, the portion is closed. Open to all who oppose? All who oppose, that portion is closed. Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. You know, a part of this $38 million, and I am in favor of the loan amendment, but part of it goes to two companies that were part of a decision that inflated the price or has changed the price, and a large portion of it, $6.2 million, is going to two contractors who are not really obtaining any more work from it. It's just because steel and gypsum and the other stuff have gone up, the carpentry stuff. I guess I would like to make a motion that the manager ask for a breakdown of that $6.2 million and bring it back to the council, because I understand that insurance and bonding went up, but you know, when people are making money and not doing any more work, and that's a large amount of money, it's $6.2 million, I just think that we should have a breakdown of where those funds are going, and I just think that they had a part in this decision-making process, and whatever they're making in a profit side, or even anything in addition to what's in their contract outside of the insurance and bonding, or whatever you come back with, should come back to the taxpayers, because they're not doing anything different. The lumber went up, the steel went up, and there's a number in there of $6.2 million. So I'd like to make a motion that we have the manager give us, or provide us with a breakdown of the $6.2 million that is scheduled to go to Skansker and also Suffolk. Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Gishia, second by Counselor Mercer, on favor of the I, oppose, say no, the I have it, motion is carry. Counselor Mercer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to apologize to the taxpayers in the city of Lowell, because no doubt their taxes are going to go up. I didn't realize that they would have an overrun right off the bat when we heard that the first phase was on time and on budget, and then they hit us with a $38.5 million overage, and we haven't even begun to go into the 1922 building and the 1980 building and remodel that. What we've already seen here was the doctor's office that was torn down, and speaking of the doctor's office, they're still going to amend their lawsuit in court and ask for more money and adjust it, and it's not over yet, so that'll be more money, and how could I say no to the doctors after they put in their life savings, their time for all this? But be that as it may, I'm not going to be the one to vote no and throw a wrench in this and cause irreparable harm to this project. I won't do that, but I want somehow to have this Suffolk construction realize that although you have billions of dollars in profit, please don't try to scam everything off the taxpayer in the city of Lowell, because if you come back for more, I don't know that I can give it to you. I'll give it to you once. Anybody's entitled to a mistake the first time, and I think they've been in business for over 20-plus years, and they don't know enough that the economy goes up and they can't secure a cost and lock in? I don't, I don't understand that. They're supposed to be professionals. And I'll tell you another thing, I want the day to come that they're in this city council chamber, because this time I'll be watching them, so they don't make faces at this council when we say things that they don't want to hear. I thought that was very disrespectful to anybody that does things like that. But be that as it may, I will support this reluctantly, because I know the taxpayers are going to pay for this, and I'm one too, and I'm, many are on a fixed income, they don't have billions of profit the way that this company does. I just don't want them to come back again, because I don't know that I could support it, and when I said, let's deduct it from the $30 million contingency, I wasn't leaving them broke. They have another contingency for $23 million, so I'm not depleting their funds, but maybe you can do that, so let them work off of that and leave the taxpayer alone. Thank you.
Any other comment? Counselor, drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I support amending this loan order, because this vote is just critical to deliver the school that we promised to our students, and that's what we're doing with this vote tonight, ensuring that we can deliver the school that we promised our students and that our students need. And I would say probably the only thing that would have caused me to question supporting this loan order was if there was some sort of question about whether there was a problem with the bidding process. These additional costs are related to the bidding process, not something that happened during the project, not something that was discovered or a change that was made. These are the result of what was a competitive bidding process, and I have confidence that the process led to competitive bids from each of the trade contractors, but the market had changed drastically from the time that the project was estimated to the time that the bids came in due to the COVID pandemic, and as much as, you know, some may be tired of hearing about the COVID pandemic and the lingering negative effects across society, the fact of the matter is, it did disrupt markets, and this project has been referred to before as occurring in a perfect storm, but the fact that it was estimated before the market changed drastically and it was bid when it was, is what caused the necessity of this loan order right now. So I take this vote with confidence that throughout this process, the bidding process led to a series of competitive bids that are consistent with what the market is bearing right now, and for that reason, I fully support moving forward with this loan order amendment tonight to deliver a quality public high school to the students of Lowell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also will be voting in favor of the loan order. I think we owe it to the students in Lowell, the staff in Lowell. We definitely can't go backwards at this point in time. My only comments would be that I do agree that a lot of these, or all of it, was caused by COVID, the prices, but the $6.2 million that Counselor Gishia is referencing, I do agree that partway through last year, there was a gamble-taking with the price of the commodities, and they lost that gamble, and I don't think that we should be penalized for that, and we really should be, you know, going back and asking them to take their share from that. Thank you.
Counselor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I too will be supporting the vote, the order tonight. You know, I do take offense with the cost of doing nothing. I mean, the taxpayers are already on the hook and l-.
led to a series of competitive bids that are consistent with what the market is bearing right now. And for that reason, I fully support moving forward with this loan order amendment tonight to deliver a quality public high school to the students of Lowell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also will be voting in favor of the loan order. I think we owe it to the students in Lowell, the staff in Lowell. We definitely can't go backwards at this point in time. My only comments would be that I do agree that a lot of these, or all of it, was caused by COVID, the prices. But the $6.2 million that Counselor Gishia is referencing, I do agree that partway through last year, there was a gamble-taking with the price of the commodities, and they lost that gamble. And I don't think that we should be penalized for that, and we really should be, you know, going back and asking them to take their share from that. Thank you.
Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too will be supporting the vote, the order tonight. You know, I do take offense with the cost of doing nothing. I mean, the taxpayers are already on the hook in Lowell for $130 million, and now we are increasing that by 38.5. You know, this council is going to be in support of this, you know, because we have the students and the children of Lowell, best interests. You know, it's just too bad that that hasn't been the case all along, because if it was, who wouldn't be in this position? Thank you.
Counselor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not an easy decision in term of, you know, just seeing this, the change in the loan orders, but we also agree that when we had people, speaker after speaker came before us, and, you know, and Lowell's not alone, other city and town too being impacted by COVID. I know we don't want to hear it, you know, but it is the fact. There's no rule that people should play by, you know, in term of the bidding process, really. Those are the people that have expertise in it, and I don't. And so when they go to delay on it and they're hoping that maybe, you know, things will go down, and it didn't, so we end up with this increase, cost increase. And I think my colleague is correct, that we owe it to our children to have the best, you know, school. And that said, I will vote to support it.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like my colleagues, I am in support of this, mainly because at this point, all we can do is move forward and find the best path forward to complete this project and give the kids the school that they were promised. While this increase in expenditure is not a pleasant sight for any of us, and nothing we were looking to do, we are at the point where we have to. If we were to vote no on this and, you know, send things back into another bidding process and figure out where we're going to get the money, I expect that those costs would only further go up. We've all seen what fuel has done over the past month or two months. Everything coming to that site is going to come on the back of a truck powered by diesel, so all of those costs are going to increase and continue to increase. We don't know what the future holds, and I believe our best course of action at this time is to move forward with this loan order. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am going to support this vote for the loan order. It's a tough pill to swallow. We've heard it from the residents. We've heard it from my colleagues. Moving forward, again, I echo what Counselor Gishia said. As far as any profits, potential additional profits, should be taken into consideration before it's handed out, as well as, I hope we're not sitting here again looking for another loan order down the line. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just through you to the council, I did want to report briefly about a meeting we had with the state delegation as well as Congresswoman Trahan's office last week regarding ARPA dollars. This has come up previously. I believe there was a motion filed asking us to pursue this further. We did get an opinion, as we've talked about here, from Powers &amp; Sullivan, our outside auditor, who indicated essentially that the, conservatively, the available ARPA dollars for this purpose, should the city decide to use it, would be approximately $2 million. We then further worked with Congresswoman Trahan's office, who reached out to U.S. Treasury to further get information and guidance on this. And though they didn't give us anything in writing, they did indicate that where this is COVID-related, where this is because of COVID, they felt very strongly that ARPA dollars are available for any such cost incurred. So as our consultants have pointed out through all the charts and everything, and what they put forward, this is because of COVID, this overrun. Why is that significant? Because these are federal ARPA dollars. The state received about $5 billion of ARPA dollars. We received, as this council knows, 76 million. The delegation, as I said, it was a joint meeting with Congresswoman Trahan's office, her folks in D.C., were on Zoom and working together. So the good news is, it does appear that there is a path for that. The issue is, that will take time, and the position is, and the MSBA supports us in this, is that the state's portion of COVID excess overruns should be paid, but they don't have ARPA dollars. So that's why we're pursuing with our delegation. I know they're in meetings, and this is something that's going to take time. There's no guarantee, but I just wanted to share that with the council. I also wanted to share that, you know, a vote to amend the loan order tonight does not mean the city's going to go out and borrow this excess money, not this year, not next year, probably not the year after. And if the city is able and successful to get other funds, whether it's through ARPA or others, then the city may very well not have to borrow this money. But in order to keep the project moving forward, as we've talked about before, it is essential to amend it now, working together again to hopefully not have to borrow the full amount, or if any, of that additional amount. As I mentioned before, you know, when we went out for the ARP boilers in '20, the summer of 2020, they had estimated the cost to be $13 million. We put out a bid for $13 million. It came in at $10. So we authorized $13. We only had to spend $10. So just because it's authorized doesn't mean we'll spend it. So that's something that, you know, obviously the delegation, both federal and state, are very well aware of this, and everybody is going to work together on this. So I just wanted to share that. And then lastly, I think some of the points raised, especially about, you know, what could happen again? Could this happen again? I do want to point out that once these figures are solidified, we'll have then what's called the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP. What that means is, they can't come back in the increase. So I just want to share that, because the GMP, guaranteed maximum price, is very important. And now that the project is completely bid out, that's where the GMP gets locked in, so.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank Madam Manager and her administration for this advocacy on this funding, and Senator Trahan's office, and our state delegation for being involved. We are not a wealthy city. This is an undue burden for our taxpayers, and I just really appreciate the work that you've done, and we're all hopeful that this funding comes through. Thank you.
Counselor Gishia?
Through you, Mayor Chow. To the mayor, thank you and your staff. Amazing, you know, between your work with the delegation and trying to look into the ARPA funds, when everyone was saying there was no way. I think it's amazing to see that you guys worked through that, and I think that, yeah, there's a light at the end of the tunnel for those funds, and it's thankful to you and your staff, and also our delegation. And I think the residents would be very appreciative when that comes through. Thank you.
Hearing no other comments, I just want to make a comment also. I echo Counselor Scott and Counselor Gishia's comments. I want to thank Madam Manager for continuing to work on this very important issues and work in the background, and to respond to really the concerns of the council body and the public to pursue the ARPA funding. That's a lot of work, and I want to thank you for that report. Hearing no, Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo my thanks as well to the administration. Time and time again, you and your staff have shown the ability and the knowledge to bring in funds like this from many sources, and the city is a much better place for it. And so thank you again for all your efforts, and, you know, they're very much appreciated by this body and the residents.
One more time, Counselor Scott?
Sorry, just one more question, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager. The GMP, do we have an end date in sight for signing this?
So all of the, I'll get back to you. So all of the bid packages have to be finalized, the contracts signed, and that will be part of the settling on the GMP. But the figures that you have, the budget that you've seen from the consultants that we've provided, that is the GMP.
Okay, thank you.
The GMP number is what I mean, the amended number.
Need a motion to adopt and refer to the clerk's office for 20 days by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Yem. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Gishia?
Yes.
Counselor Janess?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Yem?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
That's 11 ayes.
Five. Communication from City Manager, 5.1 motion responses.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Yem?
May I suspend the rule and then move up my motion, because we have a registered speaker here in the chamber? Would that be possible, Mr. Mayor?
What number, what motion number?
That will be...
8.1.
8.1, 8.1s, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Yem to suspend the rule, move up 8.1, second by Counselor Noonan. Motion passed. Motion 8.1, Counselor Yem, request City Manager have the appropriate department provide an update on the status of the collapsed retaining wall of City Point condominiums at the corner of Medisack and School Street, second by Counselor Robinson. Counselor Yem?
This will be my third, I believe, motion to get an update. The last time we get the motion respond, the building department gave us some update, and I think it's due for another update, because the resident and other people that have made not very pleasant comments through social media. So I would like our city to move, you know, quickly, and I understand there may be some issue between the condo association and the builder, but we, the city, should not be whole hostages, particularly the resident who live in that area. Schoolchildren walk to the school, have to dodge the area and walk onto the street on coming cars, you know, God forbid. We would not have, you know, someone would get hurt as a result. So I would urge the City Manager and the department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Counselor Gishia? Madam Manager, do you want to add a comment?
Yeah, I didn't know if there was a speaker, but I know we spoke about this, and Eric, we will get your written response, but Mr. Sligell may be able to address the status. Permits have been pulled. You know, the association is moving forward as they were ordered to do.
Yes, through you to the council, the condo association has completed the engineering. They have a builder. They've pulled the permits. Their permits are in hand. They did that all within the timeframe within they were acquired. We knew that they were not going to start during the winter, because it's outdoor construction, and just like we don't allow paving during the winter, they couldn't construct that retaining wall during the winter. We anticipate them starting in the next few weeks, so that's the goal.
Okay, thank you so much for the update. We have speakers. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Clerk, do we have a, there's nobody registered to speak? Do you want to make a motion to suspend the rule and have somebody speak? Are we, can we do that, Mr. Clerk?
May I suspend the rule and have that?
Motion by Counselor Yem, second by Counselor Scott. Motion passed. Mr. Speaker, please.
Ready to speak?
Yes.
My name is Sidney Lee Young. I live in the acre. When Counselor Rotayem asked me to speak, I didn't know what to say, because this is one of those issues that I know the city's been working hard, you know, through DPD, Eric, Natasha, and other folks, been going through a lot. And my concern is basically, if you go up north on School Street onto Branch, you have Star Closer, and the kids are walking there, and also CMAAs also have night classes that people need to cross down there, especially during the winter. I, I mean, I've been working on this project. I try and request a lot of assistance, and that's why I said the city's been working hard on it as well, but I don't know, there's a point where you have to give up. You don't know what else to do. But I do have real concerns about kids that walking back and forth on that right side of the street where the collapsed wall came in. There's certain time that when I drive to work, I take a picture of a kid walk past the school bus just to get off the sidewalk, and it's really dangerous, because when the kids walk down and the bus look up, you can't see the little kids walking down there. So it's been more than two years that I, you know, like I said, you know, I've been working with DPD, I've been working with, you know, email through, you know, Eric's, Camilo, and I can throw a bunch of names out there, but at this point, I don't know, but I'm really pleased to, I mean, if I have to, I can just beg and see if, you know, it can get done, because it's been more than two years or so, and it shouldn't be taking this long, and I don't want to see any kids got run over by, you know, either a school bus or whatnot, just because you know that on School Street, people are trying to reach the low connectors, and, you know, sometime they can't see, and the kid has to walk left on there. I, you know, I don't have to say a lot, and I can show you pictures, email correspondence. This is no one's fault. I know the city's, my colleague and my friend's been working hard on it, and at this point, if there's a movement that can be done, it would be great. My last contact with my colleague was September 21st last year, so that was my last time. And like I said, there comes a time that you don't know what else to do, because you just wish now that somebody can hear you and no one, you know, can be, can hurt, or, you know, no kid, you know, can be in danger just because of the sidewalk. Thank you so much. Take care.
Mr. Mayor, through you, maybe the manager has this answer. I'm not sure. How long does it take when we have a safety issue, and of course, it probably would depend on what type of safety issue it is, before the city steps in, does the work, and just back leans or charges the residents because of the safety issue? And maybe this doesn't even fall into that case. I can remember Shirley Lavasser owning property on Chelmsford Street in the corner of Pine Street in Westford, and the city went out and did the work and then backcharged it because it was overgrowth. It had the stairs to nowhere on Chelmsford Street, and the city did all of that work. And, you know, listening to the speaker, and I know it probably depends on the case, but when something is a safety issue, how long does it normally take for the city to step in, do the repair, and then offset the charges as a lean? Because if this is that major of an issue, and I've seen it, is it something that's feasible? Maybe that's a question to the city solicitor. I'm not sure.
I think Mr. Sligell can answer that. And so it does, you're exactly right, it does depend on the facts. In this case, you know, as far as the order, I think what we're told is, everything's in place, they're ready to go, they have a builder, but...
I just meant for the future, that's all, not for...
Yeah, no, I hear you. I think in that sense, Mr. Sligell, if you can address, you know, let's say there's a safety issue, and there's no viable means of the property owner, for example. You know, in that case, you know, what's the, what are the steps?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different issues that come up in this. The first is, is there a public safety issue, and has it been identified as some private property? We generally have different thresholds depending on the level of problems we do do. As Counselor Mercier remembers, there's a property on Andover Street that constantly gets overgrown, and we have DPW go out and clean that overgrowth after issuing orders to have it done. In other cases, it would be something that we would ask the law department for help to go and get an injunction, which is what we had planned in this case, to go to court and get an injunction allowing us to do the work. This is a particularly complicated issue with something like this, because it is incredibly expensive. It's going to be expensive for the condo association. It will be even more expensive for the city. We'd have to go out to bid. We'd have to hire an engineer to do engineering on the wall, which we don't have the capacity to do on staff. We would then have to hire, you know, a private contractor to bid it. That would all have to be publicly bid. So, you know, that would be only something we would undertake after we had exhausted our, you know, kind of abilities. We try not to let things last too long. I mean, 60 days is generally, you know, what we look at when it's something like overgrowth or something that we... or something that we have the capacity in-house to get fixed. If we can ask DPW to go and, and, and clean something up, that's kind of an outer limit. This was not something that we ever seriously contemplated just fixing because of the, the massive expense, and we'd have to locate a source of funds for it, it's just a, it was a, it's a very large issue that, that, it's very rare, very large issue. Also, I do want to kind of make it clear, it's a relatively short street, there are crosswalks on either end, so even, and, and there's our sidewalk on the other side of the street, so even though it was blocked off, there wasn't access for folks to get up and down that street. That is not a perfect answer, and it's not acceptable that it took so long for the condo association to do this, but it was something that was kind of.
And hearing Mr. Liang, I think it's, it's worth us contacting the school department regarding the buses, because if, if the drop off is in a place where it's compromised, we should, we should talk to the school department about that.
Could, could we ask the city solicitor to speak on this topic? Because I, I just wonder for futures, because I just think overgrowth wasn't as important as this piece looks to be when you walk up School Street, and, and I don't disagree with the previous speaker about safety issues, I, I just, I'm wondering, and expense shouldn't be the excuse not to take action either, so I, I would ask that through you to the city solicitor, see what her take is.
Madam Solicitor.
Thank you. So we do have a couple of different things at play. When you're looking at things like overgrowth, that's, it's, it's really just a, it's under chapter 111, and, and it's really a nuisance, and you can go in and cut and lean the property. But these other issues that are structural in nature, there would be orders to, to remove or make safe, there's a specific period of time in, in which to do it, and, and that's generally the process that has been followed in the past. And as Mr. Slagel had noted, we have in the past sometimes hired, hired architects to come in and give testimony as to what the safety issues are, if it goes beyond the, the normal scope of the, of the building department. But that would be the, that would be the process, and if they don't respond within that period of time, that opens the door to the city, either taking action or going to court.
You also, Council Gitchia? Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to thank Sidney Liang for, came in and spoke, and not just for himself, but also for resident. I know that's been almost two years, and I too concerned for the student who walk from, to and from Star Closer. It is a very dangerous area, as, you know, especially during the winter. I, my understanding is that maybe I need to be correct by Director Slagel, that the last report was that, that party was in litigation between the condo association and the contractor who, you know, felt the, the job, and that's one of the things too, that really hold this up. And, and hearing Mr., Director Slagel mentions that permit has been pulled, and that work will start in very soon, that is, is a good news, is a good news for all the, the kid. And so next summer, at least, you know, looking to the summer, that they're gonna, can walk, they don't have to walk, you know, on the street anymore. So I thank you, you know, Madam Managers and Director Slagel for, you know, proceed with this and making sure that this start and that permit being pulled, and I share the frustration, and you too, Mr. Mayor, when you were counselor, you filed this motion, you were the first person to file this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Leahy?
Thank you. I just add through you to Mr. Slagel, if I could ask one more question. So as we said, we, we've had a few motions on this, but what I'm interested in too is, we have gone back through the history to find out who approved it, why it was built that way, and to learn from this.
Yes.
Somebody signed off on this.
Yeah, this was, this was a, a retaining wall that was constructed a while ago, when the, when the condos were, were, that building was originally built, so it's, it's, it's not, there's not any kind of institutional knowledge about that currently with the city. There's not anybody who works here who, who signed off on that permit, there's, there's not any process that, that currently exists that was, that, that would need to be changed because of that. This is a very old, old construction.
Well, all right, but I just want to make sure that this doesn't happen again. Somebody signed off on it. I mean, we weren't here, but somebody signed off on it. It's my understanding they have to change that whole wall out, right, even the backside.
Yeah, they, they.
And they're changing the whole.
They have to, they have to, the, the engineering, obviously, it's, this is a totally different building code now than existed when this wall was constructed. Multiple building codes have come into place since that.
All right, I just want to make sure that this doesn't happen again, because somebody signed off, you know, that wasn't knowledgeable, so, okay, thank you.
Here are no other comments on favor of the eye. The post, you know, the eyes have it, motion is carried. Any more requests for suspension rules, any more? Person want to speak here? Okay, now we go back to motion response. 5.1 motion responses, start with A, Hot Pot Restaurant, any comment? Council Robinson?
Thank you, um, thank you for this report, and we're looking forward to the business opening.
Thank you. B, motion response, HVAC grants for school buildings, any comments? Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Manager, for the report. I think we're all eager for DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to figure out the, the parameters for this grant program, for certain school systems to make improvements to their HVAC systems. I know the staff will be monitoring when those funds potentially become available, and I know there are actually a couple of other items on the, the agenda that sort of relate to school infrastructure and how, how those costs will be potentially split between the, the city and the schools, and, and how we can best work together to make those investments. So I'll withhold any, any further comment until, you know, some of the, the later items on, on the agenda, but I think this is one of the potential pools of funding, and one of the, you know, several avenues to address, you know, all, all of our school facilities and making up for deferred maintenance that's occurred over the year. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
No other comment. We go to C, motion response, Colley Memorial Stadium project funding, any comments? Council Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, if you could just send a letter of thanks to the superintendent.
Any other comment? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Noon?
Yes, I was really hoping that the superintendent of school were to say yes, because, you know, to share, because, look, you know, it's part of the, the school, he's, we are team, right? So I hope that he changes mind, it's not too late, so I just hope that he changes mind. Thank you.
Don't hold your breath.
Thank you. Again, I was very disappointed in this, and it's not the first time I've been disappointed, so, I mean, you know, someone, as you, as our messenger, Mr. Mayor, could you just express our disappointment, and that, you know, Lowell's supposed to be a, a community where we pull together, and we work together, and we're team players, and this is totally not acceptable. I mean, just not acceptable, and, you know, not a place for him to be if he doesn't want to be a team player either. Thank you.
Any other comment? Council Mercier?
Well, you could look at it another way. If you owned a home, well, if you lived in a home, but you didn't own it, and the roof was going on leaking, and the landlord said, well, you're gonna have to fix it, if you're just a tenant there, which the city, the cities, we own all the buildings, the schools, so I can see him saying no. I wish he would have relented and helped us, but technically, he doesn't have to, we're the landlords here.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, I just wanted to address that, because I've heard that argument, and, and I understand we do own the buildings, but we have a tenant that doesn't pay us a dime of rent, okay, so let's be, let's be clear, you know, this isn't a landlord-tenant situation. Number one, number two, the Colley Stadium, we, we, we did go out and get an assessment, and, and again, it's their prerogative not to cooperate, but these are once-in-a-lifetime dollars that they have as well, that are eligible for this project. We didn't just make it up. These monies can be used for this purpose, and, you know, we do know, if we don't fix Colley Stadium, which is used by who? Lowell High School, that's their home stadium. We, we footed the bill for the, the turf, we did that, you know, because it was an emergency situation. And I, again, I totally agree and understand it's, they don't have to, but I just wanted to be clear that I, I, I don't think this, you know, this is, this is, their students use it, and, and we all saw that report, this stadium is in really poor shape, and we had a nonprofit raising money to fix the locker rooms, we can't even fix the locker rooms because it's raining inside, you know, so, you know, this council has so many capital demands and needs, and, and, you know, what, the city wasn't asking them to pay for the whole thing, the city's saying, well, we'll use, you know, a proposal, it's just a, just a proposal, 5 million of ARPA dollars by us, and if you use, you know, ESER, then we get the job done. So I, I, you know, again, it's, it's, it is, it is certainly within the school department's prerogative to say we have other or higher, higher and better uses for the money. I get that, but the problem, and again, the council's going to have to decide, do you just put this, you know, project on the back burner and wait for the stadium to keep deteriorating? You know, I, I don't know, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough nut all around, so.
Going to go to Council Noon, Council Leahy, Council Gitchia, and Council Drinkwater. Council Noon?
Mr. Mayor, I'm all set, thank you.
Council Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the solicitor, just a quick question. Is this something that the school committee has the right to vote on and make it happen?
Well, actually, I just mentioned that to the auditor right now, and, and I think we're of a, of a mind that this would be an issue where the jurisdiction likely lies with the school committee to do an appropriation, to decide on matters of appropriation, and at a minimum, I would suggest that it be, it should be brought.
It's okay to disagree, but the final authority can come from the school committee. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Council Gitchia?
You know, I'm never going to question a superintendent of schools, he's here to educate children, and I'm not even sure what the ESER funds can actually be used for. I work in a school system, and, and I know it can be used for that, but, you know, his job is to prioritize people's children, and make sure that they're getting the best learning environment and everything else. And, you know, we have HVAC systems that they went out, the school department went out and had somebody come in and look at the stuff, give them a number to fix things, and make sure that teachers weren't freezing in rooms, space heaters under desks, and all other things. And, and I just think that there's a priority from the superintendent that we're not aware of, that we don't have a breakdown of where his funding wants to go. And, and I just think that, you know, when you look at that, that's something that should be a private conversation between the city manager and the superintendent of schools, and, and not at this level saying, you know, let's get rid of him if he doesn't want to work with us at a school, on, on a Colley project or anything else. I, I think that we sit back and, and try to understand what is the priority for those ESER funds for him in, in the school department, because I've heard that they went out and the school committee actually held off of spending the HVAC money because they want us to spend the HVAC money. So it's, it's a back and forth battle that we have to stop in this city, because it's about students, learning environment.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I did want to address that. The last school committee voted, they took a vote to appropriate a little over 14 million dollars of ESER money for HVAC. And then what happened was, the city, working together with the school people, put together what are the priorities, you know, went through to do an assessment of what are those priorities. There's no doubt that ESER monies can be used for HVAC, but that was a vote to appropriate that money, and, and everybody relied on it in good faith and pushed forward. When we had the contract to hire, hire the assessment, you know, to do a, a professional assessment of all of the HVACs, it kind of stalled out. And to make a long story short, and I'm not trying to throw anybody into the bus, but what I was told was, in December, the school committee decided to hold off on their vote. They never communicated that to us. So, but, so there was a vote, there was a commitment, and then there was, and again, they decided to hold off. I asked the superintendent, where are they on that? Because we all agreed, these are, this is a way of getting heat. Some, you know, we're, we're pushing forward as, as actively as we can on the accelerated repair program. This council just voted for 10 applications, but there's a lot more needs than, than that, obviously. And he indicated that he, he does not expect to be putting forward what was put forward last term. He doesn't have that number, it won't be 14 million, he doesn't know what, if any, amount it will be. So that, those, that's what happened.
Do, do we hear ourselves? We have an HVAC job out there that we're not paying enough, we can't get people in. The stuff is failing, so now somebody has money, so we blame them to pay for it. And at the end of the day, it just doesn't make any sense to me. We're out here and we're trying to work back and forth, and, and I do agree, a new school committee has the right to prioritize, and the same with the old, if they didn't take the votes, and that's the way their priority is. But on our end, we're down 82 positions, we're failing in our fire department, has nothing to do with the schools. We're failing in City Hall, you can't go to the bathroom, and, and some of the bathrooms down here, they're so deplorable. You look around the city and things are falling apart, and we're saying, since they got money, we got to go to Colley Stadium with it. I, I just think it's unfair to just point fingers at one person who had nothing to do with our facilities falling apart, and say it's your responsibility because you have money, to give us the money. And I'm not saying that to the manager, is what you're saying, I'm just saying it as, as a body, that shouldn't be our job to say that, and I'm not saying that's what you're saying at all. You're saying that, you said that they prioritized these funds that way, and now they.
No, they, they voted, they vote, they appropriated the funds.
And, and other councils did the same thing here, and, and this council is, is doing other things, so I, I don't think it's your responsibility.
They never communicated that they decided to change course, but nonetheless, nonetheless, let me, let me be clear. ARPA funds, strike the ESER funds, so we received 76 million, they received 64 million, and they can use ESER funds for HVAC. Many communities have done that, many communities have used ESER in the schools now, or anywhere, actually, but for ESER funds, it can be in the schools. I totally, this isn't taking from their operating budget, this, these are ESER funds that can't, not 100%, there are other things they can use ESER funds for, no doubt. And, but this was what everybody was working on. We are in no way suggesting that the school department should be paying for things in the fire stations or things in City Hall, that's not the suggestion, I just wanted to be clear.
The, the suggestion is one that says that we're failing in our schools and maintaining them, much as we're doing in every other building because we can't get staff, we don't negotiate back with unions for higher pay, or whatever gets staff in here. We haven't taken a wage study, we haven't done that to see if we're paying people a fair wage for a fair daily work, a day's work, and, and when we look back, we're saying to them, okay, since you got this dollar figure, if they got 2 million dollars, we'd, we'd be pushing for it to go there. No, just because they got a certain amount of money doesn't mean that their priority is going that way. And I understand what you're saying, that you base something off of what a past school committee actually committed to, but they changed without even having any written agreements. And at the end of the day, it is up to the superintendent of schools to spend that money in the best design that he wants to spend it within, and that's the way he does it. And it's up to the school committee to challenge him to do it in whatever way, and, and I personally think Colley Stadium would not be the place that I would spend it, if I were him either. I would spend it back into my schools where teachers are using space heaters that could catch fire with kids in a building.
And that, that's why it is in their best interest to do, these HVAC projects are capital projects, they're capital projects that have to be done, and there's just so, only so much bandwidth the city has for capital. This is an opportunity to realize some capital monies that benefit the student body, that benefit the faculty, that they ask for every single day, I couldn't agree with you more, they ask for that every single day.
You also, Council Gitchia? Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I know the motion responses that we're discussing is specifically related to the Colley Stadium repairs, but is, I had just mentioned on the, the previous response, this is really just one, one issue in a host of school infrastructure issues that are all related. And just on tonight's agenda, we're, we're discussing multiple different pools of money that could potentially be used for everything from the Colley Stadium repairs. that could potentially be used for everything from the Colley Stadium repairs to school HVAC projects. There's our, our own capital budget. There's ESER funds. There's ARPA funds. There's the DESI grant program that was just discussed in the previous motion response. And later on in the agenda, we'll discuss potentially using money from the school's cash appropriation, from the city's cash appropriation to the schools to potentially use directly for upgrades to, to school infrastructure and HVAC. So there, there are so many different issues and pools of money on, on the table. And, and, you know, it was a fairly short response related to Colley Stadium. But, you know, I think this is something that's going to have to get worked out, you know, between the, the city manager, the school superintendent, and the respective legislative bodies to reach, the city council and the school committee. The one thing I do believe is that with respect to school infrastructure, and I would include, you know, both our, our school, our schools, our school buildings and, and Colley Stadium, I believe ESER money should be used for, for infrastructure projects. I, I know the, the purpose of the ESER funds from the federal government was mainly to address learning loss and, and issues that came up during, during the pandemic. You know, students suffered during the pandemic. Everything from, from learning loss to, you know, to, to mental health issues and things like that. And, and the school is appropriately using ESER funds to address those sorts of things in, in the schools, and, and they should be. But there is a track record of other communities in the Commonwealth using ESER funds for, for HVAC upgrades. And I think that should be part of the conversation. There's a much bigger conversation about, you know, how much, how much can they afford to do based on all the other things educationally that they have to address? But I, I do believe those ESER funds can be part of the conversation. But if, as this motion response states, if the superintendent and through the school committee are not willing to use, you know, ESER funding specifically for Colley Stadium repairs, perhaps there's another piece of the infrastructure puzzle that they, that they could be used for. So when I read this response, I, you know, I wasn't necessarily disappointed that, that the school superintendent had closed the door on, you know, the, the Colley part of this in hopes that other types of school infrastructure can be part of, of the conversation, you know, with, with the school committee, with the superintendent, and their, their federal ESER funding, along with other pools of money, including, you know, ARPA funding, city capital funds, DESI grant appropriations and everything else. So this is a much longer conversation. And I think we need to keep everybody at the table and talking and working collaboratively. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Robinson and Councilor Rook? Councilor Robinson?
Thank you. It's my understanding, didn't the schools just purchase a couple of modules for out at Colley? For the coaches and for the coaching staff?
I, I don't know if they did or not. We've had conversations. They, they indicated they were going to, but I don't know if they've actually done it or not.
Okay. And, and, and I know they're also contemplating purchasing three additional modules because classes are being taught in the STEM Academy in, in hallways because of they're bursting at the seams. So, I mean, I think this sounds like a conversation needs to happen between both bodies. I, I, I definitely think the willingness to work on projects jointly exists. But I think for years, it's, we've been going about it the wrong way. I think sitting the right people down at the table might be able to facilitate some partnership on, on some of these projects that, again, are going to benefit the families, the faculty, and the students.
And that's what we've tried to do, is partner and leverage dollars so that it's, you know, what's the best bang for the buck for the schools, for the students, for the faculty?
Yeah. I mean, and, and another thing, just in conversation is, even with the city side preliminary plans with ARPA spending, there was a total commitment out of the seventy-six million for about four million dollars for facilities. And nothing was specifically earmarked in the, the draft going towards schools. So, again, I think it's going to take both sides to come to the table in a real effort. And I think these conversations need to continue.
And that's why it's with the city council.
Thank you.
Councilor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you want to get into a logical conversation about school or firehouses and file a motion about it, right? But here, we're talking about Colley Stadium. You know, it's been a problem. The city has reacted in situations where the field would be unusable if action wasn't taken right away. Action was taken. Assessments were, were needed. Assessments were done. You know, this is not, you know, asking, you know, for, you know, ten, twenty, thirty million dollars. This is a true partnership going into kids from K through twelve, use that facility almost on a daily basis. You know, the fact that the superintendent does not intend to contribute at all to Colley is very difficult for me to, you know, to apprehend because it's just comprehend. And I'm not sure, I, I can't receive an answer as logical of why he would, he would do that. Mr. Mayor, I would ask you to bring this motion to the school committee to discuss it. You know, I'd be willing to speak on it if you, if you like. But this is something that, you know, we can talk about the, the education of kids. But almost as important as that is their physical activities, the extracurricular activities that involve in everyday life. You know, and to, to be turned down, shot down so quickly is disappointing, to say the least. So I'll put that in the form of a motion that you bring this to the school committee for discussion and hopefully for a vote.
Motion by Councilor Rook, second by Councilor Leahy. On the face of the eye, I pose a note. I have it. Motion's carry. No other comments on this response. We'll go to D motion response. Separate areas. Any comment? Councilor Gishian?
Mayor Chow, I just want to thank the wastewater for this unbelievable report. But I, I just want to highlight a few things just for informational purposes. And maybe Aaron Fox is here. I, I see him sitting there. So maybe through you, we can have a, just a brief conversation about it. Because I, I think that when you look at the report and, and you turn to page two where the charts are, you'll notice District Two and District Seven have, have not fulfilled what the other districts are for separation. But when you, when you turn to page three and you look at those districts, the one thing that you'll notice is when, when you're separating a sewer in a water, a drain line, you have to drop them into a conservation area or into a waterway. So when you look at those districts, you'll see quickly at District Two that the waterway up there is the reservoir. And there's really no waterway or a conservation area to put it in. So you're seeing that in order to separate District Two, which is the Centerville portion, it would have to probably cross over the boulevard and go into the Merrimack where now you get into the Army Corps of Engineers and, and other issues over there. And District Seven is, is unique also because you've got the canal that runs through it. And, you know, there's really no other area. It's very condensed. And there's no conservation area or there's no waterways other than that to separate into. So then when I, when I look further into it and I see the thirty acres of sewer separation equals three million dollars, again, that doesn't really get into a lot. I think that's a placeholder more than an actual even contained approximate number because it, it depends on depths of sewers in separating them at, at that level. So I think when, when you really look through this, and, and I'm happy to see what, what Councilor Rook and I received for a response because as you read through it and you see the ARPA funding and you see the projects that are coming along, and you look at the challenges of just this sheet here, and we talk about, you know, open space, spaces in parks, this is a major, major infrastructure problem when you look at District Two and District Seven. And, you know, I, I could have sat back here and said, you know, I'm in District Eight and, and we're one of the top ones, so it is what it is. But I, I don't, I don't feel that way when you look at those areas and, and the problems that they're having on the Lakeview Ave area, the Coburn area, and, and when you look at District Seven, the same issues. And, and I really would like Aaron Fox to speak to the issues because ARPA money is very important to, to people's quality of life in those areas. And separating these and getting major trunks that are going to go across, and I would, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fox, that you'd have to go across the boulevard and into the Merrimack because there's really no conservation area or anything in District Two that's, that's going to help that. And in order to get that over, that would probably take larger than a forty-eight inch trunk to get all that water to separate out and go down there. And that's the only way that you're going to be able to separate sewer and drain over in District Two, it looks like. And, and that's a lot of area to get down there. The reservoir you can't dump into. No matter what anybody thinks, you can't dump in there. And the last thing you want to do is put holding tanks in and just hold raw sewage in holding tanks because then it becomes a maintenance nightmare through, through your department. And, and, you know, for someone who's sitting in acting and you put together reports like this, that, it's just amazing the, the amount of detail that's within three pages in looking at it and seeing the amount of cost that, that's sitting here waiting for the city. And I don't think people understand because you look at that thirty acre little circle there that says three million dollars, that was probably estimated prior to COVID. Number one, it's probably taken from data prior to COVID stuff. Because when was the last time we actually had a sewer separation project in the city?
So, Madam Manager to Mr. Fox?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So the, the last sewer separation project was in 2014. We separated an area in District Eight down by the Chumster Street, down by where Lowe's is located, the weed, the Wellman area. And so that was the last time. So that, the point of that thirty acre, three million dollar, that's a visualization. Like, I kind of wanted to give everybody a scope of what sewer separation would entail. It's not the only way we can control CSOs and control sewer sur charging, which is the most important thing, I think, is our number one goal in the utilities is keep sewer sur charges out of streets, out of businesses, and out of people's homes. So that's three million dollars. That little red circle, that's been updated to today's numbers. So we took the, how much we separated in 2014, kind of like what that equals, put it into today's dollars. And so that is what that project would give you today if you were to like separate three million dollars worth of sewer. Now, when I say separate, I just want to point out that is removal of catch basins and public inflow. There's a whole separate thing about private inflow, which you're talking about roof leaders, sump pumps, and other forms of inflow that come into the system. But that, that was the point to give that, that visualization. And so when we make the decisions of how, how we move forward and what gets separated, it's done fiscally responsible, whether it's sewer separation or storage tanks or some, uh, uh, green infrastructure such as leaching basins or porous pavement or something to, to that effect. The idea is to try, is to try to solve those problems as fiscally responsible as possible. So whether that's sewer separation, and as you correctly point out, Counselor, District Two, it's a very difficult area to sewer separate. And one of the reasons is that there, uh, um, there is no place for an outfall outside of going past Bridge Street. What ends up happening is you have an I-Wall and an earthen dam all regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers. And you can't, and you can't go through the earthen wall or I-Wall and keep the integrity of that system. So.
So when I, when I look at it, just so, it's for people who are looking at it here, and, and I don't know if they have it up at home. But when, when you do look at this thirty acre circle and you look and you take Lakeview Ave at Coburn where, where it's, it's a major issue, and you started to look where exactly you could actually put that outfall in the trunk to get there, you're probably talking six of those circles just to get to the area where you can actually enter into the Merrimack, where you can actually dump, drain one. I want to be very clear to everybody that's viewing this. We're talking about drained water at this point, not sewerage. So you would actually move that and, and it would go down probably six of those circles. So you, you're talking probably twenty million dollars just to get to that point down past Bridge Street so that you could actually tie in. Because I, I don't believe, and, and I think you can probably allude to this better, that the Army Corps of Engineers is ever going to let anybody penetrate that wall.
Correct. Yeah. So if you were to go past Bridge Street and put an outfall in to get to the northern part of District Two, you would have to have, the, the pipe by the F would be the largest and run smaller as you get up. But yeah, you would have to sewer separate all the way up to that point to get a particular street at the northern part of the district.
Which definitely has advantages because I, I think the backup comes from Bridge Street and, and then pushes back. So if it was started there, it would alleviate at least some of it until you got to that position where that you could actually get to that one point. But by, by separating something down there, you could actually alleviate a lot of, well, some of the flow, so maybe it would handle it. But, but I, I do agree that at some point, we have to start this challenge because it's a quality of life for a lot of people in that area. And, and, you know, again, District Eight, we, we don't have many of those issues. But if you look at Seal Street, we're having surging sewer lines at the same time. And, and there's issues there. So I, I thank you for this impressive map that you condensed into three pages because it's amazing how much information was defined within three pages. And then not only that, you, you played a good role at the political end and also highlighted each district for all of us to look at so we could know exactly where each one of us stood. And, and I think that we do stand as a whole, as, as a city. But I, I do like how you showed people that some places do have conservation land in the blue, and they do also have waterways that they can actually work with, but other areas don't. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you for being able to make the report. Madam Manager?
No, I, I just wanted to commend Aaron Fox for the outstanding job he did on this report. It's, it's complicated, but I did want to point out, as he pointed out to me, there is a link on page two. And for people at, at home, if they go online, they can pull up that link and get a much more detailed view of the map, street by street, district by district. You can even zoom in on properties and so forth. So it's, it's, it's hard to do a printed version of that. But you get a much clearer picture of, of each district if you go online on that link. And it will show you where, where the sewer separation is and where it isn't.
Councilor Rook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for Aaron. Sorry. So going forward, is there a, a system in place or a, a formula that, that will be used to what to hit next? Or is it, take it into account, you know, Counselor Gishian and I have visited an area that, that was imperturbable, that is actually now in the, in the green. How does the city go about saying, you know, if we have this amount of money to go to, you know, to separating it, how, how is it chosen to do so? Like what areas or what parts of the city?
So I think that what we look for first is sur charges, right? So, so if we're going to sewer separate an area, is do we have sewer sur charges in the area? Do we have sewage going to the streets, into homes, into businesses? And then what separation would need to be done to relieve that surcharge effort? You know, and a secondary goal is always CSO, CSOs into the river itself, combined sewer. You know, so, so we try to reduce the combined sewer overflow.
I mean, just looking at the map, obviously, a lot of the blue would be, I guess, where, you know, newer construction homes would have been, right? You know, and that's why you see a lot of, maybe the downtown or other areas. And then a lot of the, the green is condensed homes, right?
Right. So the older parts of the city were designed as combined systems. Whereas you move into a newer part of the city, it'll, I mean, especially the more urban, densely populated areas of the city were designed as, as like one sewer system, as opposed to separate sewer and drain systems, which will find in newer parts of the city.
So the plan over the next decade, is there one that's, that's in place that hopes to get done?
Um, the, the, excuse me, the city's in the process of pulling together an, an integrated plan, which is going to look into different areas and, and develop a plan for relief of surcharges in CSOs.
Okay. Thank you.
No other comments? Thank you, Mr. Fox. Councilor Robinson?
Um, so the issue that we discussed previously on the floor about the Jewett, Coburn, again, we won't be running any mains across FFW anytime soon, I'm sure. And as a result, what are some of the, the possible solutions for that specific area that you've seen yourself, the videos of the raw sewage in the street?
Yep. So right now, we have level sensors out in that area, in the areas you pointed out, and we're collecting data to, to really try to gauge where the, the extent of the problem, what might be done to fix it. We're looking at possible green infrastructure. So whether it be some leaching basins or areas where we can use park space or something like that to, to relieve drainage, so we would separate out catch basins. We're also looking at the possibility of a remote treatment facility down by Reed Street. And we're, we're studying the area. Maybe there, maybe there are parts that are sewer separatable, more in the eastern side of the district. And, and, but yeah, that is currently being studied, and those are some, like the, the basic ideas.
Okay. And, and do you think after the spring, usually with the heavy rains, you'll have more data to really look at and see?
Yep. As we get the more rains, I mean, even the snowmelt itself provided data, especially once we get those thunderstorms in the summer. That's when we really see the, the sewer levels come up with the high rains.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you. No other comments. We'll go on to the next motion response. Again, thank you. No other comments. We'll go on to the next motion response. Thank you for the report. Appreciate it. E, motion response, wireless emergency alert. Any comment? Counselor Yam?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the, Mr. Barry Goldner, the interim superintendent of police for this fine report, and I appreciate it very much. And what I would like to do, if it's okay, to file a motion for the city of Lowell to apply for the emergency alert, wireless emergency alert, similar to other cities in town like Boston, Worcester. And the reason I like this wireless emergency system, because everybody has cell phone. I understand the website that the interim superintendent proposed, great, but the disadvantage is that residents have to sign up in order to receive, while the wireless emergency alert is automatically on the phone. And every phone, if you check your phone under the setting, it's automatically on, unless you don't want it, and then you can turn it off. And along with other tablets that, you know, that compatible tablet also receives it. And it's also targeted just the city of Lowell. In addition, if we have friends, family coming from other cities in town and state visiting Lowell, while the emergency broadcast for the city of Lowell, they also receive that emergency alerts on their cell phone as well. And that's what the reason I really like it, that we apply for, to be approved for this wireless emergency alert. So, if I could make the motion that the city, with the appropriate department, file the application to have this system similar to Boston and Worcester.
Motion by Counselor Yam to apply, receive to apply to purchase the emergency alert system. Second by...
It's not, it's not the purchase, it's apply to the...
Apply to tenant.
Right. So, Madam Manager.
Madam Manager?
Yeah, just for clarification, Counselor, so are you asking for the purpose of snow parking ban alerts? I think the application has to specifically say what type of alert.
Well, the, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the wireless emergency system is working for all type of emergency, including the precedence of the United States Alert involving imminent threats to safety or life, Amber Alerts for missing children, and Alerts conveying recommendation for saving lives and property. So, in the application, there will be all of that together. So, I would like the city to apply, and this application would go to emergency management of the appropriate department. If you read the report, it says that it go to the FEMA, the MIMA as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification again, is there a cost associated with this that we will be given before we move forward with this?
Yeah, we'll get that information. I did ask Chief Goldner whether any of these other towns, I think when we originally spoke about it, we talked about snow parking bans and things like that. He did not believe that they used it for that purpose. We can just get more information as to what is allowed in the application process, including if there's cost. I don't believe there are costs, Counselor, but we'll make sure about that.
Okay. The report actually says the department would be able to fund the project with this existing money, so I was just curious about the cost part of it.
Yeah, I think that was referring to the I-Paw, I-Paws versus the WEA. So, there's two things. One is the WEA, then the other is I-Paws. And as has been mentioned, in order to participate in that, someone would have to, you know, sign up for it. You know, not unlike Code Red, right? You have to do some affirmative action to sign up. The WEA, it's like if you're geographically, you know, in the city, then you'll get an alert. But there's only specific categories. So, we'll ask the police department to get more detailed information, including what other communities who've been approved, what they actually are authorized to do.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Yam?
From what I looked at, the cost of applying to, for approval for WEA has no cost into it. It's free, but you have to go through application process to be approved in order to receive that service. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager.
For clarification on the language, Mr. Clerk, could you try to reiterate the motion for the members?
As I have, is a motion to request city to apply for wireless grant, to apply for wireless grant, wireless emergency alert grant applications.
So, is that the meaning, your intention of your motion?
Not the grant. It's applying to receive approval to use wireless emergency alert.
So, I think they were in the process of going to prepare that, so we'll make sure that they do that and get more detail as to what they can actually use it for.
So, maybe, Mr. Clerk, maybe add, Counselor Yam, maybe to get a report on the application process for that. We need to get a report first, and then we can vote on applying. Would that be okay?
That's fine, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I think amend the original motion to request more information on the application process to get approval for WEA, so.
Second by Counselor Rook. On favor of the I, opposed, you know, the I's have it, the motion is carried. Any other comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll go down to the next motion response. F, motion response, marijuana delivery status. Any comment?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Managers, and Director Sligo, through you, to Director Sligo, Madam Manager, for the report. It's, thank you for the report, Director Sligo. Second page mentions that the city is finalizing the requirement, and that what would be on those requirement, Director Sligo, if you, what would some of the requirement be?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through Madam Manager to Mr. Sligo.
They're going to be similar to the requirements that we had put in place for the retail marijuana, which is preference for the use of an underutilized or vacant space, a preference for Lowell hiring to the vendors and employees, to the extent that that's legal. We, at their request of the council, we are going to put a premium on folks who are within the social equity program that the CCC has. And so, those are kind of the general guidelines around how we would be choosing the specific entities. I think we're also likely to give a preference, although it will be up to the administration, to entities that are already operating within the city, if they, if there's an entity that already has a host community agreement with the city and is performing well under that host community agreement. We would like to give them a preference over a new entity that doesn't have any connection to the city.
I see. I noticed that in the report, the second page, a paragraph above the last one, said that there will, there will need, there will need to be a zoning change in order to reflect the new CCC, which is Cannabis Control Commission Regulations. This is pertaining to the delivery business. What are those zoning changes that we envision?
Sure. That's a very good question. And I actually think that we were hoping that this would get referred to the Cannabis Control Subcommittee to kind of flesh out the specifics about this. But in short, when we originally passed the zoning regulations, the Cannabis Control Commission had not, they didn't have any regulations related to delivery. Their ultimate regulations put delivery in a category that wasn't, that we didn't contemplate in our original zoning regulations. And so, we would have to make some tweaks. So, they're allowing microbusinesses and manufacturers to do delivery, as opposed to retail entities to do delivery. And we need to change our zoning to reflect those locations and those type of businesses as being the ones able to do delivery now.
I see. Since you mentioned that it's best to be referred to the Subcommittee, Cannabis Control Subcommittee, I think we probably should do that, also to address not just this, but update on where we at on the recreational marijuana, how many has been open, and how many is still, you know, at work. So, I would make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to refer this to Cannabis Control Subcommittee, to have further discussion on this and other.
Motion by Counselor Nguyen to refer to Cannabis Subcommittee, second by Counselor Robinson. Motion passed. Counselor Mosey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Connor Baldwin, I'm very curious about what revenue is generated through taxes, which you told me last week. What amount of revenue is brought into the city from the sale of marijuana? Do we have a total or anything?
Mr. Baldwin?
I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but if you don't have it, could you provide it somehow?
Sure. We can get you a report on that. I hazard a guess at a number without information in front of me. There are two primary sources of revenue, the local option excise on retail marijuana, and then host community agreement payments for both retail and medical marijuana in the city. But we'll be happy to provide you with a report.
So, do we get any money from distribution, the growing, the growing?
Yes, we do. Those would be provided for in the host community agreements. But we'll give you the aggregate and broken down by type.
Just that I'm curious. Like, what portion of that went to the taxes, went to the, you know, to the...
It is not an insignificant amount of money. I can say that much. There is, this council took a vote a number of years ago to segregate 25% of the local option.
That's right. Yes.
Excise into the municipal facility stabilization fund. The balance of that are general fund receipts. And so, are collected as part of the general fund every year.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
No other comment. We go to motion response. G, Singh-Lewis School, any comment? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I'd like to thank Eric Sligo for this report, for reaching out. And is this something that we can keep our finger on, should the current agreement fall apart or whatever reason? Still, just keep us in the loop in case down the line the opportunity presents itself?
Yeah, sure. I think that it's a phased development, is my understanding, in their filing with the planning board. But certainly, as it moves forward, we can periodically check and make sure if for some reason it fell apart.
Okay. Thank you.
No other comment. We go to motion response. H, open space prioritization and funding. Any comment? Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start off by thanking Christine McCall for this excellent report that she did. And there were a few surprises in the report. I had reached out to Christine that I just questioned a little bit. Some of the park space numbers showed large square footages, for example, in my district in South Lowell, that were surprising to me. They really stood out. When I questioned her about it, you know, she had said that it was done by census tract, so parts of Fort Hill, Shed Park, the cemeteries are included in that open space number. So, I think it's a little bit, you know, not reflective of usable space necessarily by people in that district. My other concern with it is that I think that not all parks are created equal, even though the space is there. So, parks like in Back Central, Olivera Park, you know, they have a lot of space there, but there's no amenities. So, I think that would be my only thing that I would just like to ask Christine about, you know, as far as prioritization around the actual amenities at those parks.
Madam Manager?
Yeah, Christine McCall.
So, I believe Olivera is listed as an unfunded priority project for us, so we just have funding to move forward with the project. A lot of the, what dictates what park projects we do depend on the grant. And so, that if it's state or if it's federal, it dictates what types of projects we can do. So, sometimes replacement of just park benches is seen as maintenance, and that's not something a lot of grants can do. Obviously, CPA is a new pool of money that we now have access to, and so there may be some opportunities there. And then earmark money is dictated by the state. And again, so, and that is the largest pool of money that we get to distribute in park investments.
Yeah, I would just comment, that was another really big surprise from this report, that our largest source of funding for our parks, it appears, is earmark funding. There were three in Belvedere, three in the Highlands. So, it was really surprising to me that there's no, obviously, it's an earmark, so it is what it is, but, yeah.
I will say that individual, either park groups' residents are big advocates for parks in their own neighborhoods. So, we would recommend council members to themselves and also their residents to lobby their state representatives for earmark funding.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor, Madam Manager first?
I didn't know whether, there is a presentation. I didn't know whether there was a wish to have the presentation sent to the Parks Subcommittee or not. Just going through the open space plan and how the priorities are, it could be delved into in more detail. You know, DPD could give that presentation. The council has a copy of it, but...
Yes, I was going to ask to make a recommendation to move it to the Subcommittee, Parks and Recreation.
Motion to refer to the Subcommittee, second by Counselor Janess. Motion passed. Going to Counselor Janess, and then Counselor Nguyen. You also want my comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you for the report. It's very detailed, and there's a lot of great projects in here that I can't wait to see take shape over the next few years. I did have a couple of concerns, though, that I wanted to address, and maybe the Subcommittee is a better place to address that. But two of the densest neighborhoods in this area are downtown and Lower Belvedere. Neither of those neighborhoods have any completed, funded, or unfunded priority projects at this time, according to this map. They're the only neighborhoods in the city that don't have any projects on this list. And I think it's important that they do have projects added to this list, particularly when you look at a lot of the development that's going on in the city right now. The Hamilton Canal District is being built up. That's going to bring more residents, more density, and take away some open space. The East Campus development that UMass Lowell is looking to do will likely take away the open space behind the Songus Arena. So, I feel like there's a lot working against us. And if we're not trying to stay ahead in identifying projects to be on this list and work towards in the future, we're going to get to a point where we're going to say, oh gee, we should have done this, or we should have set some space aside before it all got developed. So, I think it's important to look through this in a future lens. And I'd really like to, you know, have that conversation at the Subcommittee level, so I'm glad it's going there. You know, as I said, downtown and Lower Belvedere, two of the most dense areas in the city. And the neighboring neighborhoods, Back Central, the Acre, and even across the river in Centerville, are also teetering on that line as to whether or not they have enough open space, based on the chart in this report. So, I think it's important that we keep an eye on that and try to identify opportunities. Thank you.
Counselor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I do have questions around the Roberto Clemente baseball field lighting. I know that the report indicated that installation bid is in progress. Can you give me a timeline as to when, you know, the, in terms of installation, the bet, and then the installation, and when this should be finished on that one?
So, Kumenzellis is both considered a funded and unfunded project, because the park improvements we don't have funding for, but the lighting project we do have capital money for.
Right.
The RFP, I believe, is drafted and will be published within a month, and then it'll just be depending on the bid responses.
So...
So, I don't have a schedule at this point, because we haven't had bid responses.
So, is that hopeful that they will get, you know, to play this summer with light on?
I don't want to make a, I don't want to make a promise on that, no.
Okay. Also, just a suggestion, the installation bid and the progress is in progress. So, if you could provide timelines and put it on the city website, so that, you know, resident in each of its district who live nearby somebody's park will know, you know, when is the timeline and when to be expected.
For what project? Because I will say, for the Kumenzellis project, the design planner in DPD is in contact with the neighborhood groups. And so, I do think, while the website may not reflect accurately where we exactly are in a project, we are very good at communicating with folks who are interested in projects.
That, okay, that would be good, not just for Roberto Clemente Baseball Field, but also for like Crawley Park, and Amory Park, and some of those areas that... also for like Crawley Park and Amory Park and some of those areas that, you know, that work is in progress, so to speak, you know? So that's all. Thanks.
Any other comments? No other comments. Thank you, Ms. McCall. We will now go to motion response I. Rock Freedom Way. Any comment?
Quickly, Mr. Mayor, you know, the homeowner is happy that the city has reached out and hopeful for a design and agreeing to be put in place. So thank you.
Councilor Gishia?
One portion of the report is just troubling to listen to, and maybe there's an excuse for it. It says the portion of the drainage swale behind 28 Freedom Way is no longer functioning as intended and has instead been filled in since the previous vacant lot was developed into a single-family home. So at one point it was functioning, and somebody filled it in. Who filled it in and why are we paying for it?
Madam Manager?
Based on what we've discovered is it wasn't the city that filled it in, and so that's part of the issue. So the, and that's unclear. I know the Law Department's working on that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city solicitor. She has just a quick comment.
Madam Solicitor?
Thank you. This easement is also one that services not only the property in question, but other properties as well. And so, again, as the manager had stated, even though the city played no role in making our easement non-functioning, we are working to come up, or the Water Department, Wastewater Department is working to come up with a design that will correct it.
How big of an area are we talking about? Because I'm just amazed that trucks come in, they fill in an area, or a resident who abuts it, or whoever does, and there's residents on a street and nobody's seen this. So that's always a challenge when you see these things filled in and then people build or whatever they do in these areas that were designed for this issue, and now the taxpayer is left holding the bag. And it's bothersome that nobody in this neighborhood saw anybody fill it in, and now the resident in other areas have to pay for this issue. And it was already designed, it worked, and now all of a sudden it doesn't, and nobody knows anything, which would very well surprise me, but I get the city's position as no one's actually saying anything. Thank you.
No other comment. We go to motion response J. City and school finance collaboration. Any comment? Councilor Musia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report was very nice. I'm understanding that my motion asks for, to get any idea if they were having any meetings, and they are, they reported through this report that they are having meetings and they are strategizing. So it seems like they're doing that, so that's a good thing. I just was checking to see if it was continuing, and evidently, according to this report, it is, so good. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, we now go to motion response K. Bookmobile partnerships. Any comments? Councilor Gishia? I'm sorry, Councilor Janess?
Okay. When we stand up, we don't look anything alike. I just had a quick question about what are the next steps? I think this is a big need for our city, and I think it's important, and where do we go from here? We've talked about developing these partnerships. How do we put this in motion? Thank you.
Through Madam Manager to Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So right now, we're in the procurement process, which will be underway for a little while longer, and then the, you know, the assembly of the van will take place, and the city will take delivery. The library is already in the process of developing programming for the vehicle, and as by way of this motion, we've communicated that we've been in contact with the various educational institutes in the city to develop partnerships so that once the vehicle is ready for deployment, that we will have the infrastructure in place to program, you know, to visit the neighborhoods and to maximize its to its full potential. We do anticipate that taking shape over the course of the next few months.
Great. Thank you very much.
Seeing no other hands, we now go to 5.2. Councilor Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cindy, on the library, I want to thanks Connor for the report. I want to thanks all the three individuals, the library directors, the superintendent of Volk, which, Councilor Cuchio is the one who refiled the motions on this partnership, and also Dr. Boy for this partnership. And so that said, I think this is a great hope going forward. We bring the library to the neighborhood and promote library, promote learning, not just during the, during the school year, but also during the school break, especially during the school break. Now that said, April 5th is going to be a National Library Week. The library will be, have a gathering at 5 o'clock.
Any other comments? We'll now go to 5.2 informational report. L informational NSS compliance and fiscal year 23 school spending. Madam Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we did prepare an informational report. I'd ask Connor Baldwin to address it, essentially giving the update on net school spending and also where DESI certified net school spending for the past fiscal year in the communication with the school department.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Manager. The informational report is one that we traditionally bring forward to the council in advance of the budget process. We have recently received notification by DESI that the city exceeded the net school spending requirement for the last certification year, FY 2021, by $6.5 million. Now, included in the informational report is a chart that compares the city of Lowell with our peers in gateway communities and shows that we are well above the spending requirement. It also discusses our strategy for funding the 2023 budget and the proposed appropriation for the Lowell School Department in hopes that they are able to prepare their budget for the next year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or question? Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to make a comment, really. Within this report, it, and by the way, before I begin, it's great, once again, that we are well above the net school spending requirement. I know we have been for the past several years, and I think that's a really important investment by the city in our schools, and consistently seeing that number well above the net school requirement is a really good thing. I have to say, I am, it gives me some concern that, you know, potentially, as discussed in this report, we may, as a, you know, to relieve the budget somehow, take some of the cash appropriation and use that elsewhere within the budget. There are two references in the report. One of them is to use, I think, some of the cash appropriation to the schools and give that directly to the DPW for school infrastructure projects. As we were discussing earlier, we need to find ways to make sure we're making the investments in our schools and catching up with a lot of deferred maintenance that's happened over a number of years. And that is something that will help students, it'll help educators, and it's, I know it's on top of mind for many students, educators, and parents as a condition of our school. So I think that is something I can support. The one that concerned me more was the potential using some of the cash appropriation to the school to contribute towards the cherry sheet assessment for the charter school reimbursement, or the city's share of the charter school assessment. We discussed this last week, that the charter school assessment has been a consistent backbreaker for the budget and has been traditionally a cost that's been borne by the Lowell taxpayer coming from the tax levy, and it's a big issue. I do have concern that if that burden is shifted, you know, through the city's cash appropriation to the schools, more or less to the, to the school department and to the students. I think it's a tough pill to swallow every year to see that charter school assessment go up. I think it would be a tougher pill to swallow if we could see that money moving directly from our cash appropriation to the schools, to that charter school assessment. Now, we have to address this somehow at the state level because we can't maintain this level of increase in the charter assessment year over year. It's a problem much bigger than this city, right? But it does concern me as we move forward that, you know, to potentially see money go directly from the Lowell Public School system by way of the city's appropriation to charter schools by way of the assessment. So I just wanted to put that concern out there. I do think through the investments in our schools, that's something that will directly benefit Lowell Public School students. Money going to the charter school assessment is, I just, I don't see the benefit to our school students. So that is a concern I have with the approach here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. And as Mr. Baldwin pointed out, this is part of the budget-making process, you know, in advance of finalizing the budget. You know, one of the considerations is there is an increase that DPW is asking for in their request for budget, in large part because of schools, and it's not unrelated that the $14 million commitment may not be there. So there are screaming needs in the schools, and so DPW has been asking for more money so that they can address some of these things. So I just want to point that out. It's, but this is all part of, you know, trying to put the budget together. It is true that the charter school assessment is one, but when we're looking at a $10 million delta, you know, I just wanted to be clear, this isn't a, you know, one-off for, you know, charter school in the, what's being proposed for the school department. There's really a lot of DPW increase requests that will go directly to the schools.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also just like to comment. Prior to my time on the school committee, I followed the school committee meetings and on and such, and there were many years that we did not meet net school spending. This has been an upward trend through the years. Your administration has met it time and again, and I'm really not sure what the appropriate level of net school spending is to be at, you know? It just seems like a step backwards that we shouldn't be taking in my mind. I mean, I'd like to try to do everything. We also, obviously, are in a budget crisis. We have major facility issues to address, so I'm welcome to a discussion around the money going directly to the schools, possibly, but as far as going back, it's just, like I said, it's just not something I'm really interested in. I don't know where we stand right now. We used to be, you know, within the bottom five of districts in the state. I'm sure we've moved up quite a bit, but it's just, like I said, it should be a priority for us to maintain that. I'm sure we're way above that at this point with your contribution that you're making. I think we should refer this to a joint Subcommittee, Finance Subcommittee between the schools and the city, and I would make that in the form of a motion, just so we can have a better dialogue about this.
Motion by Councilor Scott, second by Councilor Gishia. Motion passed. Any other comments? If not, we'll now go to 5.2. I'm sorry, we just presented. Need a motion to accept all the motion responses, the informational sections. Motion to accept and place on file by Councilor Yen, second by Councilor Drinkwater. All favors the I oppose say no, the I have it. Motion's passed. Six reports of the Subcommittee. There were no Subcommittee meeting this past week. We go to seven petitions. 7.1 claims, five property damage, and one personal injury. Motion to refer to Law Department for reporting recommendation by Councilor Janess, second by Councilor Leahy. On favors the I oppose say no, the I have it. Motion is passed. We now go to the City Council motions. We already have taken up 8.1. We now will start with 8.2. Councilor Musia, request city manager find ways and means to televise the meetings of the Lowell Sustainability Council, second by Councilor Nguyen. Councilor Musia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you can remember, last week, we had a group of members from the Sustainability Council. They came up to the podium to speak individually about their concerns and their issues. Members of the public who were watching the City Council meeting were interested in hearing more about this group, and they asked me if the meetings were televised, and upon checking, I believe that they were not because I looked on the city website and I didn't see them, they just, this motion is in support of the people that called me at home and asked if it were possible to start putting the meetings on television. The Sustainability Council, and this is what it said on the website, the city's website, they meet on the fourth Thursday of each month at 6:30 in the mayor's reception room. For those residents who are unable to make it to a meeting, it would be nice to watch it at home. So before the City Council meeting started, Chris McNeil, who's in the cloakroom there, he came over to me and he said that they do televise it. So if they televise it, I didn't see that on the website. I think if any meetings put on TV, then it should say that it's broadcasted, because I could have called these people back and said, yes, it's already televised, but I didn't know that because I didn't see it. So that would be, so I'm thinking that it is according to Chris. I didn't know that it was televised, and the website didn't indicate that. So could I ask you this as well? It segues right in. So the city website, who is responsible for the city website? Is there any one particular person, or is it...
Madam Manager?
Well, you know, MIS, obviously, is in charge of the city website. In my office, we add things and bring updates and so forth, and Phil Jeffrey in my office does all of that in terms of notices, communications, updates. We'll check this. I'm not aware, we'll double-check on whether this is regularly televised and whether, you know, it can be added to the website.
Because I'm thinking if the website is talking about other commissions and meetings, it's not telling us that it's televised, and I think that's an important factor in, not everybody can come up here and maybe they want to put on their TV and stay home and just watch what's going on. Like the Board of Parks meeting is now televised, is it? Okay.
Yeah, that's been moved over to City Hall, so it can be televised.
Okay, so I'm thinking if we could have someone check to see if the different meetings say that they are televised, maybe there's some that are not.
Yeah, and we'll work with LTC as far as that.
Sure. That's all I'm concerned about. People, you know, they're very interested in the city and what's going on, and so they can't probably make it up here to City Hall at 6:30, and then they want to stay home and watch it on TV. But if the website says, doesn't say it, they probably think it isn't, like this particular motion was a good example of that. So thank you very much.
Hearing no other comments. On favors the I oppose say no, the I have it. The motions carry. Motion 8.3, Councilor Gishia, request city manager to look into purchasing handheld decibel meters for all police cruisers to enforce the city's noise ordinance, second by Councilor Drinkwater. Councilor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. This is important to many residents' quality of life. With spring and summer right around the corner, I have received multiple complaints on loud vehicles pulling up the four-way stop signs. We have loud exhausts, radios out of control, people blaring their radios in neighborhoods. I had a person reach out, not only from Lawrence Street, but you get them from Princeton Boulevard, you get them from Pine Street, you get them all the way across the city, people blaring radios and just out of control. And when you look in the city ordinance on noise, chapter 204-3, it says sound level limits at the highest level of 60 decibels outside, which really translates to an air conditioner. Anything over the sound of an air conditioner is out of range of our limits. And also, the heaviest, in heavy industry, from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, it says 70 decibels can be, anything over that would be a violation. And one of the issues is at 70 decibels, that's just a washing machine. That's what that translates to. So when you look at it in a residential setting, the loudest it can be is 45 decibels, which is the hum from a refrigerator or moderate rainfall. So, and then when you look back at the ordinance, you quickly see on how they measure it. It was, it's written in there. It says the... It says, "The measurement of sound or noise shall be made with a sound level meter and octave bin analyzer meeting the standard prescribed by the American Standards Association. The instrument shall be maintained and calibrated in good working order." And those are questions. So I reached out to see if every police cruiser has one of these. And it's not even remotely, I think they said they might have two and they're not even sure. And the residents' concerns are when they pull up, when the police department pulls up, they don't have a way of measuring any of it. So they basically just tell them to turn it down and they walk away rather than writing out the three ways, the warnings in getting the information done. And at some point, if we're going to have ordinances in place, we should give the police department the tools to enforce them for quality of life for our residents. So that's really what this is about. It's just more about, we're gearing up for spring, we're gearing up for summer. If you go by St. Helia's, you'll hear all of the music blaring like crazy and the neighbors have to live with it. And it's just not right. Someone cleaning their car now imposes on your neighborhood and starts turning up the radio and/or revving up their motors. And the other day, I was in traffic driving here, WRX STI, one of these crazy cars. I couldn't hear the radio in my car. It was so loud. And it wasn't the music, it was the car itself. And you just, you wonder how we actually get stickers. And maybe they put the exhaust on after. That will always be the excuse by the person doing it. But, you know, I just think we need to gear up at this time of year and just make sure that we support the residents more and supply these instruments to every police. And I would take whatever tool that the police department feels is appropriate to meet the standards of our ordinance. But I do think that going forward, we should give them those tools and have them in every sector and every car. So if they want to get out and, of course, I don't know the cost, but it would be something to look into just for quality of life. Thank you.
Counselor Yem and then Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend Counselor Kishia for brought it up. And I personally had called the police a few times. This is a few years back of the neighbor who blasted the music so loud. I have an elderly father-in-law who was not well. So while, when I called the police department, the police department answered the phone, say, what's going on over there? Because it was so loud, you could hear that. So the cruiser came and the cruiser went and told them, similarly, like Counselor Kishia said, they turned it down and the cruiser left and they started again. So we all called, so the neighbor called a few times. But right now, the issue resolved because there's so many police officers that came by. So I think we should look into how we can enforce it, not just the music at the party backyard in the acre, but also the vehicle. And also, we have some people in the neighborhood using one of those dirt bikes and they get so loud that the elderly neighbor was complaining about that. So I think that's the noise issue. So if we could equip police department with proper equipment that can enforce the noise ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've also received the complaints about the loud cars, around the car washes around Rogers Street, et cetera. So this is a good motion. My question is, does the police department enforce construction noise? Would that be who, someone would be calling if they had complaints? And would that be the same thing about having meters to measure that? I'm receiving a lot of complaints about construction noise around Moore Street.
Madam Manager.
Construction, like a construction site?
Right. Rock crushing.
Well, yeah, the noise ordinance would be enforced by police. But if there's some kind of violation of, if there's, you know, special permit or anything, then that would be inspectional services as well that may get involved in terms of citing someone for violating terms or conditions. So it could be both. It could be, it could be both. But as far as the noise ordinance that Counselor Kishia was talking about, that would be police enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Counselor Scott touched upon on the issue of where St. James and behind it, there's a railroad and there's a lot of rock there and there's somebody working and there's a blast of the rock. So the neighbor in that St. James Street area mentioned that this blast on and off. And I would like to see if through you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Manager, have proper department to look into it. If they do that, they should really send notices to residents saying that we will be blasting the rocks, you know, from this day, on this day, from this time to this time, so that the resident lived there not afraid of something bad happen, you know, a bomb or something like that. So this is what I would ask if Madam Manager can look into.
Madam Manager.
So that would be something would need more specific information. That could indeed be conditions of permit or so forth. So if you can, you know, offline, give us more specifics, then we can ask them to go out and look at that site.
I will, I will.
Because they can only blast with special permission and there's conditions as hours and times and so forth, so.
I would like to stop by number, I believe, 29 St. James. And then they showed me. So I went and through the back of, and I saw piles of boulders and they drilled it, they blasted. So I did see that. So I will give you a call tomorrow, Mr. and Madam Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
See no other hands. On the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. 8.4, Counselor Gishia, request city manager provide the city council with a list of city board members serving with an expired term, second by Counselor Leahy. Counselor Gishia.
I'm going to make you happy, Mayor Chow. Motion speaks for itself.
Yes.
I was waiting for that all night. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. Motion 8.5, Counselor Robinson, request city manager have DPW provide a list of all monuments the city is responsible to maintain and what the detailed maintenance schedule as to rather these sites for Memorial Day, including remarching of locations, second by Counselor Rook. Counselor Robinson.
This motion is pretty self-explanatory. With Memorial Day coming up, I know Counselor Yem has been advocating for a lot of different things to honor veterans and people throughout the community. So I'd appreciate this report. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. What's the story? How long is the Big Phil going on for another? What's the schedule for that?
What do you mean by the Big Phil? Are you talking about the Lord Overpass?
Yes, the Lord Overpass.
That's supposed to be finished sometime later this year.
Okay. So my concern with this motion too, could we have them, I know they've been cooperating with us, but the Kazandian memorial there, can they do an extra cleanup for Memorial Day on that? I mean, they have been taking care of it for us, but it is a staging site and really not appropriate. But if they could get other land, it would be better. But it is a nice memorial to the Kazandians and it's, I think the family spends their own money on it. And it's really a disgrace, but it's just, you know, how it's being treated right now. The contractor is doing his best to keep up with it, but it really shouldn't be used as a staging area. So, thank you.
Counselor Gishia, are you making up for that?
No, it would be very quick.
Motion speaks for itself, so are you coming back to the next motion?
Through you to the manager. Could you add Glacial Ave to your list of monuments? Someone has a plow on the rock over there with the monument on it. So that whole area, that circle there, it's off of Westford Street. Glacial. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick comment from up here. I know there's a lot of discussion about the Memorial Day events. And I also made a motion the last term about having the flag similar to the concern of Counselor Yem. Would it be possible, Madam Manager, to ask Mr. Eric Lamarche to come make a report, you know, what his plans are at the next meeting?
Plans for Memorial Day?
Plan for Memorial Day or surround the flags, if any parade, just?
Yeah, I'm not aware. We can get a report, we can ask him to come.
Okay. Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Manager. I had a conversation with Mr. Lamarche regarding it. And he will be here to give the report of my last motion regarding the update on the ribbon and the flag the next Tuesday. So he'll come. And also, he will talk about the Hometown Heroes Banner Program. And then we'll update the counselor and the people at home so all of us, you know, get ready for Memorial Day. So we'll be a full report next Tuesday, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Managers.
Wonderful. All in favor, this motion say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. Motion 8.6, Counsel Robinson, request city manager have DPW provide the council with a detailed weekly cleaning schedule, including all locations for city business districts in regards to the tenant vacuum that comes out of DPW parks, second by Counselor Scott, Counselor Robinson.
So this motion here comes from the many complaints I've received of how dirty our business districts are. I was involved in negotiations of securing additional tenant vacuum and putting on additional staff under manager Murphy, I believe, at the time. I mean, I've poked around, I've received multiple phone calls from employees. It seems like this practice of ignoring job responsibilities for favors needs to end. I've received multiple calls from neighbors regarding potholes, instructed them to, you know, report it via the city Lowell's website. Residents of PV, Columbus, First Street Boulevard, Meadowcroft, Chumsford, Westford, Middlesex, Pawtucket, or any of our main streets, they deserve to have their concerns addressed equally. The reason I think our business districts aren't being cleaned routinely and regularly through the third tenant that was purchased and goes out on the trailer is because we're too busy doing other things that don't even have nothing to do with the job description. We had the superintendent of parks, I was notified, in the middle of Andover Street with marking paint, circling potholes to be patched, the day after a motion was made on the council floor for repairs to the road. I mean, if that's how we're operating, our local system is broken. I mean, I've yet to seen any of the hundreds of other potholes citywide marked out, let alone by someone that doesn't even have the responsibility of dealing with street problems. So even last week, manager Donahue spoke to, DPW staff is doing 80 potholes a day in some instances to keep up on the workload, which I commend them. But, I mean, how are we pulling people that are tasked with the responsibility of maintaining overseeing open space, green space, cemeteries, to find time at go time in the middle of spring or beginning of spring to go out and mark potholes on Andover Street? Again, so I guess that tells me we should have no worries about our ball fields being all set to go for opening day. There's been delays on practices, I'm hearing, in some instances on fields, because nothing's been touched. There's still leaves, debris around all our monuments, so that's why that motion had to be put forth, to make sure six weeks or whatever it is, is plenty enough time to get ready on that. In addition to all our parks, we still haven't even put back the public barrels that were removed allegedly for the winter. And the barrels that are there are all snow coning, overflowing, debris everywhere. Just recently today, the barrels hadn't got picked up at McPherson Park, kids knocked them over or the wind knocked them over. There's garbage everywhere. I don't understand how all of these routine things, like the vacuums clean and the small tenant vacuums, we have two downtown that are there five days a week. The third one is supposed to be in every business district. Come take a ride by Couples Square, come take a ride by Lakeview Ave, Aiken Ave, Bridge Street. All these small business districts are not getting cleaned. And I scratched my head and thought maybe it's mechanical breakdowns. It has nothing to do with it. It's the responsibilities tasked coming out of one area are being ignored while we're finding time to shift people around that don't normally even perform that work. So, I mean, I don't know what has to happen, but at the end of the day, we've provided the equipment, we put on additional manpower, and it's still not getting done. Same thing with the barrels. I mean, we went out to purchase, this council was good enough, the previous council, to secure funding to purchase a trash truck. Every barrel's snow, I know it's not delivered yet, but every barrel is still snow coning. And when that trash truck comes in, what's going to be the excuse then? Thank you.
Counselor Gishia. Counselor Leahy.
Not to defend anybody, but, you know, it's the responsibility of this council to provide funds for staffing. So I know that the parks was out there helping the street department fill potholes. So that was a collaboration between two department heads to go out and fill potholes, which are tremendously, we're just overwhelmed with them. So I have no problem with department heads, you know, stepping up. I mean, let's face it, sometimes the crews, for whatever reason, they drive over three holes to fill one major hole. So total rehab has to happen with street department, park department, lands, buildings, facilities, and that's up to the council. And that's what's going to come up with this budget. And we have to bear down and put some extra money in it. If it means raising taxes to hire more people and get these departments up, then that's what this council has to do. But we have to make a decision. We can't really go after the department heads or the workers that are understaffed trying to do these tasks. So I think that this council really needs to bear down this budget and decide what we need to do and build these departments back up. So, I mean, you know, I complained about Andover Street myself, yes. But, you know, some of the major roads, two, three weeks, they get some big potholes filled. And I understand that they have a system. I didn't want to interfere with the system. But we were inundated with potholes and they couldn't get to them all. So, you know, it's up to the council to deal with this, with the budget.
Counselor Gishia.
You know, when you look at this issue and you get the calls, high school sports started last week and on Manning Field, Lowell Catholic plays softball. And it wasn't power rate, it wasn't, the infield wasn't turned over. And we have a superintendent of parks out doing potholes. If we can pay that rate for a superintendent to do that, then we surely should start paying the lower workers that rate to do the same potholes. And when you look at PV Street, I had called it in myself and said, when you look at PV Street, it's a complete disaster. And that was a month ago. The buses come out of there. One night before, on this council floor, Andover Street was said to be paved, had potholes, and it got filled by a parks department superintendent, while we have water department people that do that for a living, patch holes. We need our parks straightened out for the kids to play on. Today, Lowell Catholic went out there to play on a field with other schools. And the field's not really playable. It wasn't turned over. But yet we're filling potholes. You know, Mike O'Malley, you know, he's out injured and I understand he's the horse behind it. And when you look at that department, people do get injured and people do move around. And as Counselor Leahy stated, that there is a demand for that, and I would agree with him. But I think it goes back to a motion that I had on here asking for the engineering department to give us back a report on the street treatments. Are we doing Cape Seals? Are we doing crack seals? Are we doing? We have to do preventive maintenance better rather than hire people. If we do preventive maintenance right, correct, we don't have to hire people and take on the old PEB liabilities. And that's what it comes down to. It's management doing their job and looking out for further costs and holding it back. Are we understaffed in areas? Absolutely. But we're also not maintaining things the way they should be done properly and it's costing us a lot of money. And then we're using people who get paid extreme amounts of dollars compared to the people that we could do this with to do our simple tasks. And I think it's an organizational issue and we need to do better at it.
Counselor Mosier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I think about the budget and I think about free cash, I'm very happy to say, oh, wow, we have this free cash. And I'm not saying that all of it comes from the budget. But when you appropriate money for positions and they're not used, then it goes over to free cash. And it bothers me to know that there's 82 positions that were not filled. And when I hear that people are filling potholes and they don't belong in that position, they're their job is X at another department and they're filling holes and they're doing things. And this is happening all over the city. We are like borrowing Peter to pay Paul. We're like taking people from one department to another to try to get them to do this, that, and the other. That, it's not even their job. I don't know what it is. Do people not want the job? Are we not putting the notice in the paper or whatever? I, I, what is it?
Let, let me, let me be clear. These jobs, particularly in DPW, are posted. We don't get takers for these jobs. Let's, let's be honest. We're not paying enough. People are not applying.
We're not paying enough.
We're not paying enough.
That's right.
And that's one of the challenges.
Right.
Now, and that's one of the things we did put in the free cash recommendation was to do a wage and salary assessment. We've gone months and months and months, posting, posting. So it's not because we're not trying to reach out. But it's very hard to fill jobs in many areas today. But in our, especially our labor positions, they're just not applying. And the only thing you can surmise is they're getting more money elsewhere, doing other stuff. And so changes, you know, it will be, this will be something that this council have to consider in the budget.
Right.
Have to consider, you know, going back, you know, in terms of negotiations and so forth.
And then the people, the departments like DPW that are working and are shot staff because there's four people that are out through retirement or got another job that pays more money, they're doing the work of the rest of the people that weren't, that are not there anymore. And it's very frustrating for them. And then you have people that you meet in a supermarket that are screaming about this, that, and the other. I, you know, it's like, what, what do you want me to do? But it's like a vicious cycle. I, I'm not putting the blame here to anybody, but we need to fill these positions. And if you feel that the reason is, which I believe it, is pay. When we lost so many good people to other communities because it gets better, they get higher pay somewhere else, that is sad for the City of Law. That's very sad. So there is a motion here by John Drinkwater, Counselor Drinkwater. I'm certainly sure that I support that because it's much, much needed. There's a lot of work that has to be done in the city. And, and I'm happy for the free cash, but I want to, maybe we could use some of that to try to compensate and have a desirable pay scale so people will want to work here. That's my opinion and I'm sticking with it.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What worries me about this is that we're not getting equal access to services for all of our neighborhoods. A motion is made on a Tuesday night. On Wednesday, they're out there paving the entire road, filling all the potholes. The next day it was, I believe, or if not, it was the Thursday after. I called a month ago to have the school, the Pine Arts potholes filled. They're still really bad. I went by there the other day. As far as I know, and it's my understanding, that the parks supervisor was sent out to Andover Street. But also the men that were tasked, men and women, I'm sorry, tasked with filling the potholes at the schools were pulled off of those jobs and sent over to Andover Street instead. That greatly troubles me. So I would like you to look into that. I don't know how that, you know, decision was made, but it just doesn't seem appropriate at all to me. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it. My understanding is because the, as this council knows, there's just been so many potholes this year. And the, and the priority was, let's get these addressed. So the parks department was pitching in and doing it. They were doing the schools, I think, so in, in doing the parking lots. The streets were doing the streets, so we'll, we'll get a detail. But they did start doing the ball fields last week, I think the twenty-fourth or so. So, you know, we can get a full schedule, which is what the motion's looking for. But, you know, to my knowledge, there, there's, people haven't been pulled off jobs. But we'll find out, Counselor.
Counselor Drinkwater, then Counsel Leahy and Counsel Robinson. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I appreciate all the, the concerns being raised here about our, you know, organizational structure and how we can do things better and just ensuring that all of our city services are distributed equitably. I do just want to comment that I, I think it's important that every counselor here, we all hear from, from constituents. I just think it's important that every counselor can feel comfortable raising concerns that come from their district regardless of, of where those are. We, we all need to ensure that our services are distributed equitably. And I'm sure, you know, we'll, we'll get the information back. But I just want to, just want to make sure that, you know, all eleven of us here feel like we, we can come to the city council floor with the concerns that are brought forward to us by, by residents, by our constituents and, and raise them. We're certainly not, you know, directing services from the floor, but we should all feel like we can bring those concerns forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to be clear too. I, I think it's unfair of us to sit here and if we're not sure, we shouldn't make accusations. When the Andover Street was brought up by myself on the floor, I had waited three weeks too. And they're just overwhelmed. But I also made the recommendation that they hit the main roads, whether it's Chelmsford Street, Woburn Street, Stevens Street. You hit the main roads, that's where all the complaints come, all the flat tires, and then you go into the neighborhoods. Any department head, the parks department head, he was not out there filling holes. He was marking major potholes in the street. That's all he did. And whether or not people were pulled to fill them, you know, that's what they were doing. Filling major potholes on major streets. I know the street, I've driven around to the schools, I know the schools need repairs. And so I think it's unfair to say that we're pulling people off to go into certain neighborhoods. They're in all the neighborhoods and everybody's waiting just like everyone else. So I think it's unfair of us to say that we're, we're giving priority to certain neighborhoods. We're just overwhelmed with potholes. And the parks, I mean, you know, it's, it's sixty degrees one day, it's snowing in the thirties the next day. I don't know how these guys get the parks ready. It's not even April yet. So we need to give these guys a break. They're working as hard as they can.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. The issue isn't prioritizing, although the prioritizing is, I mean, again, there's, there's been potholes, large potholes on every main street in the city, some longer than others. That's not what the dispute is. The dispute is as a result of pulling people to perform work that they don't do. If, if you have time to mark potholes in one street out of a thousand potholes in the city, one street gets marked out, in essence, you're neglecting the ball fields, the park barrels, the vacuums, the, the green space, the pruning, the leaves, the debris, the litter. If it wasn't for low litter crew, where would it be? And all of this, we're having a conversation why someone tasked or a position tasked with these responsibilities, we're justifying how we can slide that person over. If it's a staffing issue with the street department, have the conversation with the department head from the street department. If it's a staffing issue in the parks department, I'd like to see the request then. Where, where are these requests for additional staffing? It's, it's, the excuses we've constantly been told so far is it's either COVID related, staffing related, but yet there's enough free time to have people do what they normally don't do. I mean, something is broken, like I said earlier. And, and I think we can do better to provide routine services that people can pretty much set their watch to. Thank you.
Counselor Gishia?
You know, I want to be very clear on something. You know, Mike O'Malley has filled potholes in this city for many, many years. And, and I've been around filling of potholes my entire career. I've never seen anybody send somebody out to mark a pothole unless you're a private contractor and you're getting paid for it. You don't normally send somebody with a paving truck and say, mark it. Usually when you drive down the road, if you can't see the pothole, there's a problem. Why would we use that resource that way? When, if you're in the paving truck, you're driving down the road and you look and you say, this is a pothole, get out, fill it. You know, and, and obviously it was a directive to do that, because you would never ever go out and spray paint around that. You're wasting spray paint, number one, because you're going to fill it anyway. So it, it just doesn't make any sense. And, and I think that we're wasting our resources that way. And maybe that's why we have a shortage of help, because we're not utilizing efficiently the way we should.
Seeing no other hands on favor of the aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it. This motion is carry. Eight point seven, Counsel Janess requires city manager provide an update on the current status of the Beaver Street Bridge project, seconded by Counselor Nguyen. Counselor Janess?
The motion speaks for itself.
Madam Manager?
Yeah, just an update. The bids are due to be opened, the bids for Beaver Street Bridge, April fifth.
Very exciting. Thank you.
On favor of the aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. Last motion of the night. Eight point eight, Counselor Drinkwater requests city manager work with the HR department to identify any positions in need of a wage adjustment to keep pace with the current state minimum wage or the scheduled state minimum wage increase to fifteen dollars per hour in two thousand twenty-three, seconded by Counsel Mosia, Counsel Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as we all know, the state minimum wage has been adjusted several times in the last several years, most recently in January to fourteen twenty-five per hour. And it will be raised again in January of two thousand twenty-three to fifteen dollars an hour. I also know many of our collective bargaining agreements in the city were renegotiated last year. What, what this motion, with this motion, what I'm more concerned about is some of the, the positions that aren't covered by collective bargaining agreements. I know there's a number of, you know, part-time and hourly positions that have typically been around the area of, of the state minimum wage. I'm, I'm hoping this can be a fairly easy report to, to produce. Just, you know, see what the, the hourly rates that our employees are currently making and ensuring that if they do need to be adjusted, if they're not currently covered by a collective bargaining agreement and they need an adjustment to ensure that we're paying at least or hopefully higher than the current state minimum wage, that we are and that we're prepared as we approach the upcoming budget, that in January of twenty twenty-three, we're prepared to make sure, you know, all of our city employees are making at least the new minimum wage of fifteen dollars per hour. Yeah, as, as many people may not be aware, municipalities in Massachusetts are actually not covered by the, the state's minimum wage law. As typically when it's raised, it's considered an unfunded mandate to, to hold municipalities to that. But as a matter of principle and fairness, I think it's important that we are, as a city, ensuring our employees are, are making at least as much as is required by the state minimum wage. So look forward to, to receiving the report. I'm, I'm hoping that it doesn't require a lot of action in terms of wage adjustment. But if we need to do it and if we need to make sure there's enough money in the budget to make those adjustments, I, I think this council should prioritize that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comment? Counselor Yem?
If I may add on to that motion to have the comparable position and pay of nearby cities in town so that we know how, you know, how the pay for our department compared to maybe other cities in town, if that possible? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So okay to make of the motion? Madam Manager?
I, I'm not quite sure. Comparable positions, I mean, that's what the wage and salary study would have to do. That's a, that's a, a very big study. I, I don't know if we have any that are not making minimum wage, so. At this point.
Counsel.
So the recommendation that was to do a wage and salary study?
Okay, that, that, all right. That's fine. Thank you.
Any other comment? Here none, all in favor say aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it. The motion is carry. Nine announcements, any announcement? Counselor Nguyen?
Mr. Mayor, in, in our package is also a KMAA flag raising scheduled for April fourteenth. If I could ask through you, Mr. Mayor, to invite Low Public School, because here you have Low Charter Schools and CMAA, it's not Low Public School. Maybe it's time that we add Low Public School into this, you know, the flag raising, Mr. Mayor. Invite the, the school to join us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will do. Good comment. Counselor Gishia?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I just want to make the public aware that we get a lot of invitations to things. And, and sometimes on our desk, it's always during our work hours. And we don't want people to think that we're sliding them for their events. But a lot of these events are being at ten o'clock in the morning on a Thursday or other times. And I just think that people have to understand that the council actually works day jobs and we can't always just get to these events. And I just want to thank people for their invitations, but a lot of times it's hard for a lot of us to get to these events. And it doesn't mean that it's not important to us at all. It's just that we don't, we don't have that time away from our current positions. Thank you.
Any other comment? Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In line with my unofficial title, along with my entire city council and the mayor, we would like to extend an early birthday wishes to Counselor Eric Kachir. May you be healthy and strong, keep us all night long, every Tuesday. Happy birthday, Counselor.
Thank you.
If no other announcement, I just want to quickly make a, a quick announcement from up here. Counselor Mosia did a moment of silence earlier on the National Vietnam Veterans Day. But also would like to read a Facebook post from Mr. James Gaffney, who is a, a veteran, and his post is meaningful to recognize today. I'm going to just read off his Facebook page. March twenty-ninth, National Vietnam Veterans Day, honoring more than two million who served in that war and more than fifty-eight thousand who gave their lives. And he showed a photo, he shows the American Division Infantry waiting to board for an operation nineteen seventy Kwangai Province. A meaningful photo. So thank you to Mr. Gaffney for his service and all the veterans for their service and for posting this recognition of today. Thank you so much. We now go to adjournment, a motion by Counselor Mosia, seconded by Counselor Janess to adjourn this meeting on favor of the aye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. Thank you. Have a good night.